Morning.
Morning.
You making all the noise?
Huh?
Yeah, we made all the sound.
We heard it was coming from your desk.
Oh, no, it was you. Sorry, you're making it.
You're a little, you're a little flinchy.
Did you see the way people scary shows all the time?
It weren't, it weren't coming from here, that's all the thing I know, it weren't.
It weren't coming from our office either.
I don't know that for sure.
It was really loud in the small room I was in when it happened.
You ready, Becky? Okay, it is nine AM. I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At about nine fifteen, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. Our first item on the agenda this morning is to open with prayer. Commissioner Bruns, would you join it? Would you lead us, please?
Absolutely. Please join me if you would. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We ask for a touch of your discernment and your wisdom today as we meet and discuss important issues for Lincoln County and make decisions that impact so many that we serve. Lord, we ask that you just lay your protective hand on those that provide safety to our community, our first responders, our law enforcement personnel. Lord, we also ask for protection for our military personnel that fight for our freedoms, that serve here, stateside and abroad. We pray all these things in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. Next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on August fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the August fourteen Commissioner meeting as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Next item on our agenda is to consider the following: claims and treasures receipts first.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion to approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mister Chairman, there is a claim for a project that the county has going on that I am pulling from today's process on the probation building. We have a couple of loose ends to tie up before I would like this claim to go through.
Any other discussion regarding the claims and treasures receipts? Roll call, please.
Woller.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next item on our agenda is to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement to the food service contract with Summit Food Service LLC for the Lincoln County Detention Center.
Yeah, don't sign that.
Huh?
Don't sign that.
Don't?
It's my fault that it was on the consent agenda. I was not clearing up the list and I was gone with the stick most of last week. Pricing structure is what we offer. The other two paragraphs are clearly I was not articulate enough with them. They weren't agreeable to us. So having spoken to Mr. Williams by email again, I think they're gonna be willing to take that out, but...
Yeah.
I had to get the contract forward before the first.
Right care paragraphs two and three are...
Yes.
The minimum of five percent increase every year. Yeah.
Okay, so we're still gonna have food, right, over there, gentlemen? Huh?
You're cooking. And you're late.
I am late, aren't I?
There's gonna, there's gonna be a whole lot of cereal happening over there.
Well, you can set the table about it.
Okay, that will be table till next week, I assume. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hey, by the way, Sheriff, there's a blue van parked in my spot. We haven't towed it, please.
No, that's actually my spot. And it was tight getting in, thank you.
You're welcome. I parked it.
Oh, no, you know what? I take it back. I did get in, so it was your spot.
It was.
How did I get it if it was my spot?
I was hoping they'd come over today so I could give him grief.
I would reconsider giving him much more grief. I just don't really can.
Okay, I'm gonna clear right there.
Barney banging around?
The Barney. I noticed him right away.
Sorry about that. How the hell did I get it?
I saw that. I'm like, there's no way I can crowd that out. I'm just gonna go on south.
I'm not sure he can get out of that spot now either. I think he's there for the day.
Hope he's got a can opener.
What's the pole in there for? Hmm? What's that pole for?
I guess I didn't know that.
Period. I was looking for a cattle pusher on the front end, so I guess that wasn't it.
So you know, like, sometimes when we get these, there'll be like three or four on each, you know? But like today, they're all in a bit. You wonder what the difference is.
Two different, two different people, too.
Oh, I didn't notice that. Maybe that's it.
Like, oh, this one is not...
That one has multiple ones.
But this one here, see, this is a fleet manager, and there's a difference.
Oh.
This is a long one.
Oh, my.
I saw that, too. I didn't know what that tells about.
Different people fill it on the corners, apparently. Joe, I was embarrassed to learn when we got home Wednesday from our field trip. That was Brad's birthday. I didn't even wish him a happy birthday. Didn't even buy his lunch.
I figured that was just GPS talk. I didn't know.
There was plenty of that, wasn't there? Sorry.
Don't care. Chris, could you make it up? Please come around here.
Yeah.
Broken Bow has one.
Ainsworth has a sizable one, too. Is that Brown County?
Brown Rock County. Davenport County. drove by a mall last week.
The one northeast of Broken Bow has been there a good long time, and it's not a real big one.
I guess I never saw it. Of course, I don't think.
Yeah, if you, if you head out of Broken Bow on the way to Westerville, you'll see it.
My travel mileage had dropped off significantly in the last five and a half years.
I don't have to, so... Yeah, that really is.
Every room is cool.
Wasn't nice.
Brian said the RV, I liked the Napa one.
And it didn't, and it didn't turn out to be a big deal with getting that sound going, so... The feedback was way about a little... Sense of the, this privacy, you know, having that, having... I took a tour of their shop not long ago. What are you looking for?
aluminum ramp.
Oh, I'm sure they do. At the, at the least. I'm su- I'm sure they do.
The one I bought was a bifold.
Bifold. Yeah, I think they do.
I knew this receipt a couple times that well.
Certainly. It might be a good idea. Oh, here it is. I put it at the very bottom of my file. Okay, I'll let you know.
I need to get some of that.
That's right, you know, if they drop coins in, two, two or three rooms.
Probably without a special sheet.
Probably. Actually, no.
It is nine fifteen. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First item on this agenda is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on August fourteen, twenty twenty-three. I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. Morning.
Morning.
Uh, two here, is that correct?
Yes, you do. Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor. We have two accelerations of mobile homes. The one for Ben Skomp is moving to a different tax district, but staying within our county, but we still accelerate the taxes and collect it for this tax district, because that's where it was located January first. And the other one for Alvin and Kimberly Schroll is moving to Hay Springs. So we are accelerating the mobile home on that parcel as well and collecting the taxes for that.
Okay, the, uh, these are both accelerated taxes on mobile homes. The first one for Schrolls is an amount of $225.44. The one for Ben Skomp going to Jerry Lobner, did I read that correctly? That one is, uh, the amount is $384.90. Since these are both accelerated mobile homes, can we handle these in one motion? Move we approve certificates of correction, refund as submitted by the county assessor and has read.
Second.
I'm glad we can, since we did. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Okay, uh, next item on this agenda is motor vehicle tax exemption applications as submitted by the county treasurer. And guess what? I'll bet it's your county treasurer.
Good morning, Alex Gertschel.
Good morning.
Good morning, Alex.
Looks like we have, uh, one from Community Action Partnership of Mid-Nebraska and then a couple from American National Red Cross and, uh, no, three from American National Red Cross and one from Great Plains. Mister Chairman, are you ready? All right, I am ready. Make a motion. We approve the application for exemption from the Community Action Partnership of Mid-Nebraska for a 2011 Chevy Colorado. It's recommended for approval on an educational basis from the county treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Mister Chairman, I have three applications from the American National Red Cross. The first one, it is my motion that we approve the application from the American Red Cross for a Ram 3500 Pro Master 2021 Box Van used for charitable purposes. Vehicle is used to transport supplies and staff to blood drives. It has been recommended for approval by the Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Gertschel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
The second application for exemption by the American National Red Cross is for a Chevy Equinox SUV all-wheel drive model 2023. It is also used for charitable purposes for blood collections, blood drives, and training for national disasters. It is my motion that we approve it as it has been approved by Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Gertschel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woller.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
The third one, it is my motion that we approve the application for exemption by the American National Red Cross for a...
Hold on.
Two different bins, two different vehicles.
Okay, we do have, okay, good, thanks.
Thanks. Uh, for a Chevy Equinox 2023 SUV all-wheel drive used for charitable purposes for blood collection, blood drives, and training for national disasters. It has been approved by Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Gertschel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Woller.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Chairman, uh, my motion for approval of Great Plains Health application would involve two vehicles. On 457, they've enumerated a Ford 2004 model year E350 Econo van and in addition, a Honda 2015 Odyssey van. Uh, rest, both are used for general hospital use. It's been duly signed. It's also been reviewed by the county treasurer and approved. It'd be my motion to approve as well. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Thank you. Next time when they fill us out for Red Cross, we might tell them they can put more than one vehicle on a...
On one form. They came from a couple different fleet managers, so...
Well, the one was the same for the Equinox, but the other one was from a different fleet manager.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Okay, so at nine twenty-two, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
We could, but it's not a wide angle. Can you give that a shot?
Do these trainers have a built-in area? Yeah. I don't even know. Yeah, because I don't, I don't like it.
Make sure Tyler's in the picture.
Tom, a small one.
Photo jet.
A ramp that just falls down and then another one.
It's not gonna get everyone in the picture, is it?
It's no sunlight. I can do it by myself. You don't... Yeah. Plus, like, the, the back end of her vehicles are really beautiful and tools. And all that stuff is in stock, so they're, they were close.
Can you hear us?
I have some neighbors that are...
Yes, we can. We can, we can see you, Chairman, and we can hear you. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. We have a few minutes before this agenda item, so you're gonna have to bear with us just a little bit.
Of course. Thank you for allowing us to join.
That's a good one.
Okay, it is 9:30. Our next agenda item is a presentation by Three Plus One. Where I went to grade school, that's four.
Mr. Chairman, I asked for this to be placed on our agenda this morning. Back in late July, while I was down in Austin at the National Association of Counties Annual Conference, had an opportunity to learn about this program and was introduced to Mr. Kyle Klein with the National Association of Counties. Really piqued my interest in the presentation and the discussion that we had, and some of the success stories that counties across the country, and a couple here in Nebraska are experiencing with this program. And so, reached out to Kyle and had a conversation with both him and Mr. Bill Cherry with Three Plus One and our county treasurer. Would like to note that our county treasurer's done a fantastic job over the time that she's been in that office and has worked really hard to make every dollar count for the taxpayers here, and was intrigued by this program on the information that they could potentially provide to her and what she does for responsibilities to the taxpayers, just to augment that additional work and stretch every dollar as possible. And so, we had that presentation, a good discussion with them this last week, and wanted to get this on our agenda so that that way they could present to the full board and you all could learn about the work that they do, the program that they offer, and how it may be of benefit to Lincoln County. So, invited them here and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Kyle at this point and let him introduce himself and Bill himself, so.
Well, thank you so much, Commissioner Brunz and Mr. Chairman and to the entire Board of Commissioners. Really grateful for the opportunity to be here with you this morning and present on behalf of the National Association of Counties, the Nebraska Association of County Officials, of which is also a strategic endorsed partner of this program and has endorsed it as a best practice for the county members across the great state of Nebraska. And also thankful for Bill Cherry and Three Plus One, our partners. My name is Kyle Klein. As the Commissioner of Brunz had mentioned, I'm the Director of Financial Partnerships at the National Association of Counties. And I work directly with Bill and his team at Three Plus One. We've been partners at the national level for about five years now on this program, and it's just been a tremendous asset and a tremendous benefit to our county members around the country. To date, we are proud to announce that we have delivered over, in partnership with the county finance officials that we're working with, at over $1 billion in new non-tax revenue. So, the impact, as you can imagine, in those communities that are partnering with NACO and Three Plus One has been tremendous in just doing many more, providing, you know, higher levels of services, filling budget gaps, you know, many number of benefits. So, we're grateful for that track record and we really found this program to be unique. When we did our own new diligence at NACO, it was about a year-long process about five years ago. We were introduced from a number of counties and where the program originated with the New York State Association of Counties. We got out and did our new diligence, spoke with many different counties, and wanted to learn, you know, what was so unique and how they were able to achieve the results that we were hearing about. And we were just so impressed. They are not a bank or financial advisor, but they are a data provider, and they really supplement the work of your treasurer, of your finance office, and just can really provide additional benefit in terms of revenue. And that's really the goal of NACO. That's why we're interested. Our goal is stronger counties, you know, for a stronger America, and that comes with revenue generation and cost-saving programs. So, that's the department that I work for at NACO, and that's where this partnership resides. We're very proud of the track record and just thankful that Lincoln County is taking a look at this and we would love to partner with you and show you some value there. So, without further ado, I will just stop there and I'll introduce Bill Cherry, our partner in Three Plus One. Bill is the Director of Public Partnerships and has been a county treasurer himself for, I believe, 24 years. He was a former county treasurer and also spent time in various levels of local government as a finance director. So, lots of great experience here and looking forward to hearing his presentation and insights, so, and hope that you find it valuable as well. So, Bill, you can take it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kyle. And Chairman Woodruff, thank you very much for allowing us to present here today. Commissioner Brunz, great to hear your voice again. Thank you for meeting a couple weeks ago. As Kyle said, I served as an elected county treasurer for 24 years. Also served as a budget officer in my county. It's with Sclary County, New York, a rural agricultural county, not a huge budget. And I went out to be honored to serve as the President of the New York State County Treasurers Association. I also served on the Board of Directors for a short time with NACO while I was President of the New York State Association of Counties as well. So, lots of experience in county finance. And after I retired from public service, total of 38 years as an elected official, I served on our county legislature as well before becoming treasurer, so I noticed the issues that you have to deal with. But when I retired from public service, I was approached by NACO and by Three Plus One because of my experience and asked to take a look at this cash vest program and give my honest opinion of it. And quite honestly, as Kyle said, it was, it's just common sense, just plain old logic, and the results are proven. I've been with companies about four years now since I retired. When you're... Got a very short slide presentation that I will, that I will share with you that I promised Commissioner Brunz that I would make it, make it short and sweet, because I know you've got a lot on your agenda. But again, thank you for allowing us to be here today, Mr. Chairman. As you can see from the main slide there, we are partners with NACO, also endorsed by the Nebraska Association of County Officials, and we're very proud of those designations. So, what does Three Plus One do? We provide cash vest reports. They give a comprehensive view of all your county's cash and liquidity. Right now, you probably use multiple banks and have multiple bank accounts within those banks. It is sort of a, sort of a, in most counties, a sort of a fractured view. Cash vest reports brings everything together into one easy to, for your treasurer, easy to use tool that can make a huge difference in the decision-making process. We develop accurate, incredibly reliable future forecasts of where your cash and liquidity will be in the future. And as you'll see in the upcoming slide, that was a really critical piece. But also, as Kyle said, we're not a bank. We don't touch your money. We're not looking for deposits. We're a tool and the treasurer's toolbox. We provide independent third-party evaluations of all interest rate offerings. We can, of course, compare rates from the existing banks that you use. We can also, only with your, you know, with your permission, would be glad to provide independent third-party interest rate information on regional banks, statewide banks, even some of the big national banks. We, we, we don't get commissions or there's nothing like that. As I said, we're independent. It's just that we, we know all of those banks because we already worked with all of those banks. And when I say worked with them, I mean, we're tapped into through our clients, through our long list of county clients. We already know what those banks are offering to other counties, so we can make sure that, that your treasurer has the best information to be able to get the highest rate. We also analyze banking and compensating balance requirements. That can save you a lot of money on seeds, hard and soft seeds. So, how do we do it? We do it by constantly analyzing the cash account as a deposit. We get view-only access, again with your permission, view-only access to every bank account at every bank. And then we take all of that data and every day it's updated. It tells us how much money came in, how much money went out, every single day from every single account. And we go back one or even two years to analyze that data. And in the end, it helps us identify, on average, 73% more cash that can be put to work than most counties think they have. And as Kyle said, the results have been more than $1 billion in new revenues that would have, would have not been achieved otherwise. So, future forecasting really is a critical component of best practices. This, what you're seeing is a six-month future forecast. The blue line is Three Plus One's forecast for this entity. This is about a, I'll call it about a $100 billion county. The blue forecast, they can look out, they can look out on this chart and you tell with great accuracy exactly how much liquidity and cash they're going to have on deposit, one, two, three, four, six months into the future. The yellow line underneath that is the prior year actual information, which of course is a really important component of making the forecast. But we also factor in low forecast, the what-if scenario, worst-case scenario. And that came in very handy during the COVID epidemic. The low forecasts were also incredibly accurate. And so, the value of those low forecasts is if some unforeseen circumstance were to arise and it were to negatively impact your regular revenues, we can predict when and if you'll need to borrow money to meet daily cash flow requirements. In most cases, it's not required because there's other liquidity that can cover that. This is a 12-month history, a 12-month chart of a county's actual expenditures and revenues. And we take that liquidity data, the how much, we add the future forecasting, the how long will it be on deposit, and then we marry those two things together. And as you can see here, the gray area on top, that's the actual working capital for this, for this county, starting, starting on, I think this is probably a mid-year sort of thing, it's probably like June 30th through, through the beginning of July. But as you can see, you know, cash on deposit regularly has a cycle. It goes down for a part of the year, and then tax revenue comes in, and there's a spike, and there's extra liquidity. But that gray area is actually all this entity used for the ins and outs of cash flow. So, we calculate a cushion. That's an additional $4 million in this case. But then what we begin to do is we calculate deeper levels of liquidity, knowing that, knowing how long funds are going to be on deposit, giving us the ability to make accurate recommendations to the treasurer's office. Like liquidity level one might be a combination of 30-day CDs and money market accounts or municipal pool. Again, we only use the same investment vehicles. You're now using US Treasury bills, fully guaranteed CDs. There's nothing, you know, there's no risk here. There's nothing that, we don't, we don't, we don't deal with anything that's, that's not probably what you're already using. It's just you're able to predict the liquidity levels, and so that's where the value ends in. And the deeper the liquidity levels go, pardon me, the longer the confidence of a longer timeframe. Liquidity level five might be a combination of CDs and Treasury bills that are 18 months or even two years. And then, of course, in between, you've got one-year CDs and so on. This is, this chart shows actual results from actual Three Plus One clients over the past 12 months. As you can see, it can make the difference between a tax increase or a tax cut. I'll start with Orange County, New York. They had about $428 million deposit. They earned it just one year. It's 12 months. They earned its $0.9 million. That's the equivalent of 5.6% of the property tax levy. And since joining Three Plus One, they've earned just under $10 million. Lycoming County, Pennsylvania, about $145 million. These counties are, this slide is bigger dollar figures than Lincoln County. But quite honestly, we serve, we serve the smallest counties in the country up to the biggest counties in the country. And Lincoln is certainly right in the middle of our cheese spot who we serve. But Lycoming County, they earned $2.4 million last year, $6.1 million. I'll just jump, jump to the bottom here. Beaufort County, South Carolina, they earn $12.9 million, which is the equivalent of 13% of their property tax levy. And they've earned over $30 million. So, we know counties just like yours. As I said, there's a map of the U.S. The states that are in purple are states where we are serving counties. Where our home base is New York, but we are serving counties now all across the country. We started in New York, as Kyle said, just five years ago. And with the partnership of NACO and Kyle and great team there, we're actually... Kyle and Gray Team there, we're, we're actually seeing cash vest being used now all across the country. And, and you know, there's really no, you know, there's, there's no, there's no trick to it. It's, it's using data and the latest technology and not formulating opinions, just using that technology to be able to make recommendations to your county treasurer's office. As I did with Commissioner Bruns and to Treasurer Versulo, I put together some basic information just from online. I believe, and correct me, of course, if I'm wrong, but I believe your county budget is about $60 million, county tax levy about $17 million. And, and after talking to the treasurer, it seems to me that right now, an average of $30 to $35 million in overall cash and liquidity on hand is a, probably a fair picture of snapshot, if will, of Lincoln's county's finances. And what we can confidently project based upon that, right now, our, our clients, on, on every dollar, this is not one CD or one Treasury, we take the overall client liquidity. And right now, our clients are, are, we're projecting 5.35% across the board on all of their liquidity. I like to be conservative. I don't want to overpromise. So I, I shaved that down to 5.1%, or you, 5.1% based upon that liquidity of $30 to $35 million, results in potential annual interest earnings for Lincoln County of just under $1.7 million. And, and our, our fee, by the way, our total annual fee for all of our services is $15,000. It is based upon your budget size. We have a sliding scale. It's $250 per $1 million budget. So a $60 billion overall county operations budget would equate to a fee of $15,000. That's it. There's no, there's no add-ons. That, that covers all of our services. And I've provided, or I can provide a signatory as well. I can provide a signed professional services agreement should, should be submitted, which will move forward. Are there any questions from the, from the county commission that Kyle or I can answer?
Bill, I know that we had talked a couple of weeks ago in our, in our meeting. I know that my colleagues probably share this question as far as guarantees. Is there any type of guarantee that you're able to provide with the, you know, if we were to invest $15,000 of our taxpayers' money into this program, what assurances do we have?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Bruns. Great question. We do offer at least a one-to-one guarantee. That's a pretty easy promise to make, of course. If you will give us access, view-only access to the accounts, we'll do all the analysis. We will prepare, it'll take us a couple of, two, three weeks to do it. We'll prepare a full diagnostic analysis of your liquidity and a listing of potential first steps and benefits. And if the benefits exceed $15,000, then the benefits that you are not seeing right now, that exceeds $15,000 with our, then, then we would move forward in partnership. If, if it doesn't, if we're not able to show that we can at least benefit you by $15,000, then we provide you with a report at no cost, and we shake hands and move forward. We, we can't promise that you're going to make $1,675,000 in interest because, you know, that would be an impossible promise to make. But we can tell you, I'm a man of my word, and, and so are the, as always NACO, we don't make, we don't throw figures like that around, you know, willy-nilly. That's based upon real results that our clients are seeing. And it's not, you know, we're not in the, the top of the line. That's the overall results, and then we're ultra-conservative as well. So with, with that kind of potential benefit, almost $1.7 million in interest earnings, I am 100% confident that we'll be able to exceed $15,000. There's no upfront payment, by the way. The billing is quarterly. You can, you can end the contract anytime. We do ask you to give us one year to, to, if, if, if we start to, to work for you and provide this data to the treasurer's office. We do ask respectfully for you to give us one year because it takes time. It takes time to build, for us to help your treasurer's office build the portfolio of laddered CDs and laddered U.S. Treasuries at the highest interest rates with varying journey dates. It doesn't happen overnight. You don't go from, you know, zero to 60 in, in one week. So we respectfully ask for one year. But of course, we serve, you know, we serve you. And if, if you decide sometime during that year or anytime that Three Plus One is not measuring up to our promises, or, or it's not an effective tool for the treasurer's office, all you got to do is let us know, and we will part as friends. I can tell you that that doesn't happen. We have about a 100% retaining rate with counties that use our service because it's inexpensive and it's very effective. And we believe you're worth it.
Mr. Chairman, Bill, Commissioner Hughes, we have two quick questions. And I think that if I'm not mistaken, I remember you from a lifetime ago in NACO with the small O, actually. But my comment is, the initial cash vest analysis, what kind of dollars do you think you might have wrapped up in that $2,000, $3,000, $4,000? I have no idea. But you must have some track record as to where you think those costs would run. And I understand it runs part of the annual $15,000 monitoring reporting fee, but give me a flavor.
You know, Commissioner, that's a great question. And nice, nice to hear from you again. I'm sure we do know each other. I, you know, I, I honestly don't know the answer to that. I'll tell you why. What we do is we, we provide quarterly cash vest reports along with, you know, basically continuing service to the treasurer's office. So you're probably, and so if your fee is $15,000, it must be costing the company somewhere in the neighborhood of a quarter of that, or, or, or less. I mean, I guess there's got to be a profit margin. But it's probably costing somewhere around 20% to 25% of that amount each time we do a cash vest report. So you're probably, you're probably actually in the ballpark. Our company would, would expend, you know, some, certainly some, some serious amount of staff time. But how that staff time, you know, breaks down, like, there's usually two or three people that would be working on the, on the compiling the data, working with the treasurer's office to get view-only access. What I really suspect, quite honestly, Commissioner, is probably a bigger upfront cost for us because of the manpower involved. So it, 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 it might be, it might be more than that. We, we would probably, if I, if I totally had to take a guess, I'd say it would probably cost us maybe, maybe between $5,000 and $7,000 perhaps of our own labor to do that. But again, that's, that would be on us.
Second question, and it has to do with our treasurer, whom I'm sure now is, is laddering her investments. Is this, you know, I guess maybe it's going to have to be a conversation we have separately, maybe with her even, because it's going to have to get deeper than that. But, but anyway, appreciate it. I appreciate the product. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for the great question.
Of course.
Bill, this is Commissioner Wiems. My question would be regarding compliance with state statute, specifically Nebraska's. Is there consideration for that in your program? Do you, you'd win blindly, so to speak? And that's the prerogative of the county treasurer and our legal counsel to make sure we're not awry of the guidelines by statute? Or do you, do you delve into that?
Oh, great, great question, Commissioner. And the answer is absolutely yes. We're very familiar with, with Nebraska statutes. We already serve Lancaster County, Nebraska, Douglas County, Nebraska. And I believe we've just started with, I'm not sure how to pronounce it. Is it Coming County or Humming County?
Coming County.
Coming County. So there are times when a brand-new state, I just talked to Missouri, met with the county commission yesterday from Missouri. And we don't currently have any Missouri county clients. So they asked a similar question. And the answer is, we always will, will familiarize ourselves with every in and out of state and local statutes as well as your own internal written investment policy. That's one of the things that we will take and incorporate into our initial analysis. But in Nebraska's case, we're, we're already up and running. So, so the answer, Commissioner, is yes. We would be, you do not have to be concerned that we would point you, your treasurer, in a direction that, that she shouldn't go.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Do we know what we're getting in interest right now?
So that's a great question. I know that the treasurer's been working very diligently on this. And I probably actually think that it's appropriate for her to join this conversation to talk about the work that she's done and the amount of interest that she's been able to bring in as far as non-tax revenue.
Yeah, okay. Alex, would you, would you join us? I would like to have your comments, not only in regards to the services that have been presented to us, but where are we now at the current state of the investments that you are bringing in on the county funds?
Well, it's a complicated question with a lot of parts in that. I mean, I can't guarantee anything interest rates year to year, which we know that. I was able to bring in $258,000 last year and some change of interest alone. That is with my treasury notes, my Treasury bill, and just having good relationships with the banks around us and negotiating interest rates. I don't like to guarantee I can bring in that much every year or more just because, I mean, that's a whole different market with a lot of moving parts that I don't have the expertise in a banking background, more of an accounting background to be able to do that.
Hopefully, we'd do better this year, I'll bet, with, with the relation with the market. We, we had to do considerably better, but.
Yeah, I hope, I hope this year we do a lot better, that's for sure. $258,000 is a lot. But like I said, that's not something I can guarantee. So far, we are getting good interest rates. I compare them to other counties our size and other counties just in Nebraska. We have a big email, but we talked about it with, I think we're doing fairly well, but doesn't mean we couldn't do better. My view is I like to keep the banks in Nebraska. Yes, in the county, but especially in Nebraska. I wouldn't, wouldn't want to go to a bank that's outside the state. That's just my preference. I've considered a couple of other banks like Pinnacle to open up, but just been trying to see what our money is doing right now. Yes, some of it is tied up in a couple million-dollar CDs that are getting a very good interest rate. I have a C-DAR that's getting a very, very high interest. I have six Treasury notes. I have one Treasury bill. Other than that, all of our accounts are made up of different funds. So that way, they don't get confused with our general operating account. It's a lot easier to balance and to keep track of. We do have some loose funds that I am able to move back and forth with interest rates and whatnot. But we just don't have sitting ducks, if that's a way to put it.
So the, the funds that you have invested for us now are either in Lincoln County or certainly within the state of Nebraska, correct?
All of the banks I have invested with are in Lincoln County. They're not headquartered in Lincoln County, but they are in this town.
Yeah, okay.
The one bank that I want to try is Pinnacle. That is a Nebraska bank. We don't have an account with them because they're not in Lincoln County. But I wanted to see how I would do with the whole year of being here.
Alex, I'm sorry. Are you comfortable with your laddering right now? Kind of, you know, your, your six-month, your year, your three, five-year, are you pretty comfortable with those kind of funds and what you're able to do with, with our budgeting process and how a county works? I mean, we know it's a different world, and I see Susan sitting up there. So are you comfortable now where you're at?
I'm getting better. I won't say I'm completely comfortable just because, you know, it is an ever-changing process. The one thing that I, I may miss the conversation for a different time, but make a cash reserves account, which that's different. But, you know, to get a higher interest rate on that or being able to invest it somehow, that's something I'm not sure how to do. But I like to see what we could do more with this. But also, Kyle and Billy, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong. One of the purposes of this is you compare the fees that we pay in each account or each bank to the money that is in there. Am I wrong or am I kind of on?
No, no, that, that's a, that's a great point, Treasurer. One of the things we do is, many counties get what they call no-fee checking from their banks. And then no-fee requires what's called compensating balances. The bank may require you to keep, I'll just throw out a number, five or $10 million on deposit. What we do is we compare the actual number of transactions, how many checks were written, how many ACHs, how many stop payments, all of that. And then we compare it to, to what the interest earnings would have been had the compensating balance been, been available to earn interest. And we make sure it's on track. I'll give you a quick example. Delaware County, New York, they had a compensating balance requirement of $12 million. We, as a part of our regular quarter of the cash vest, analyzed that $12 million compensating balance requirement for free, if you want to call it free banking services. And it just seemed too high. They just didn't have that many transactions. They, and they're about a $100 million county, but they just did not have enough transactions. So the math pointed us, and the data pointed us in that direction. We met with the county treasurer, and her name is Beverly Shields. And we said, listen, it, it looks like the compensating balance should be more like $2 million, not $12 million. She said, would you mind just telling the bank that, showing them how you came up with that? And we said, of course, we'd be glad to. We did that. And the bank immediately accepted our, our data and dropped the compensating balance requirement from $12 million to $2 million. That freed up $10 million to start earning higher interest. So that alone was a huge win. It really would be very difficult to know whether the compensating balances are correct or incorrect, or if the fee is being charged are correct or incorrect unless, unless you have a, you know, a sort of a base like we do have from you working with actual investment.
If I may, Bill, just to kind of follow up on that, you know, as we have taken this program, that really nationally, and you saw the map earlier that Bill presented, and we continue to work with more counties in various jurisdictions and different banking relationships, and also the fact that this program is independent and third-party, you know, they have access through that historic data, you know, with clients all across the country, what those bank fees, arrangements, what, like in other jurisdictions of similar-sized counties. And that's really a powerful, that's powerful information that, that they can leverage in your benefit to make sure that your banking relationships, you know, and compensating balance requirements are equitable and in line with your peers. And as Bill had mentioned, the impacts can be, can be great in that freeing up that liquidity to be invested. So that's one of the powerful components of this program.
I do. Alex, real quick.
Alex, real quick, obviously, you've had conversations with these folks, enough in-depth that you feel that there's a value to this with a $15,000 expenditure that further streamlines your process, gives you a better, another tool to maximize returns, or speak to that?
Well, I did not agree with the $27,000 fee. I kind of talked to Chris about that, and I did mention it to Kyle and Bill, how, you know, looking at the demographics, you know, being in Nebraska, even they were dealing with Lancaster and Douglas County, which brings in a lot more revenue than we do. $27,000 is a lot for us, I do believe. I'm not saying it's not worth it, but I'm saying that it is a lot, and that deals with the $12,000, the reconstruction and also the fee. And my concern, too, is, I mean, whose budget is it going to come out of?
That was going to be my question.
But $27,000, I mean, that's someone's salary, that's a lot of money.
So, just for point of clarification, the fee for the service is $15,000. There's an additional $12,000 that we haven't brought up that is bank RFP. Should we choose to go down that road later on and put a RFP out for other banking services? We have no idea if that is even necessary, because they haven't done any kind of preliminary report or anything, and it may be the fact that we have bank relationships that are key, and we don't need to do that. So, that $27,000 is not what we're discussing at all here today.
Mr. Chairman, it's an important thing, and I know you have important good coming up, too. There's a lot of information that we have. I think it's great, but I personally wouldn't mind sitting on this a week before we vote, so we can have more discussion with the treasurer and maybe some other people, and that's just me.
I concur. Thank you for my comment.
I agree with that. I'd like an opportunity to look through it more and ask more questions.
Question that I have is, if you have heard, Bill, our county treasurer uses a lot of either local banks or banks within the state of Nebraska. Would that be part of your portfolio or not?
Oh, definitely. First of all, we'll only, we'll only, Treasurer's office wants us to do. If the commission and the treasurer doesn't want to even have the data for out-of-state banks, no problem, we don't have to with anything you don't want. What we like to do is give you as much information as we can to be able, for your accounting, to be able to maximize the revenues. That's the idea. So, if you're, it's sort of an expanding circle, right? We'll start with the current banks and compare the rates of banks, and then if there are regional Nebraska banks that are, you know, outside of the county but still within the state, but in the region, we'll include those. Again, only with the treasurer's and your permission. And if you want to go full state of Nebraska, again, same thing. That's going to open it up to an even bigger circle of potential banks. But again, the decisions are always yours, yours, of course, and the choices. We don't tell you what to do. We make suggestions about what the data shows us, what we think might be the most advantageous move, for how much, for how long, how our future forecasts would give the Treasurer's office confidence about how long the CDs can be taken out for. But there's no, I mean, you're the boss, and we're just the tool in the toolbox, so we'll do whatever you want.
Bill, Kyle, thank you so much for your time today and the presentation and the information that you provided. Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Huglen and Commissioner Wiens. This is an important topic. It's an important issue. We, as elected officials, have a fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers, and I know that we have strong relationships with local banks, but at the end of the day, having the data to find out where's best to put our money is extremely important, and so I think that this is worth absolutely further discussion.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for your information and the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the commission. It's an honor to be with you today. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Alex, thank you.
Thank you, the Lord Commissioners. Grateful for the opportunity and your consideration.
Thank you.
Take care, gentlemen.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is to receive bids for the Sutherland North River Bridge As you know, this has been a project that has been in the works for not only years but for decades. There have been numerous people in this county that have been involved in this project for that length of time. And I'm glad that you've decided to open those bids, sir, because you have had a vested interest in this for a lot of years.
What I was going to do is offer to slice them, and if you'd like, I could review for a bid bond and pass them to you if that works for you.
You check the bid bond and then send them down here to Commissioner Wiens, and I will dig through this.
Does that work?
I would also like to thank former Commissioner Bill Henry for being present this morning. Thank you, sir.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County.
Kevin Petrus, Miller &amp; Associates.
Thank you. Can you help me keep these organized here?
I'll do my best.
Okay, the first bid I have in front of me is from Simon, North Flat, Nebraska. Bid bond is in order. I take it, Sheriff, if you pass them down?
If you got them, it's in order.
Okay. Sounds great. Bid on, what do we have here? Looks like you got your completion date scheduled. The number should say bid process. Bid process. Unit bid price schedule, yes, sir?
I just going to ask, any alternates?
No alternates, but there are four addenda.
Okay, so when you read that, if you want to just acknowledge receipt of addendas one, two, three, and four, and read the base bid, I'll bet you were there.
Okay. See any addenda on here, do you?
There should be a form on there where they checked whether they got addendas one, two, three, and four somewhere.
Probably first page, perhaps.
Yeah, see where it says number three?
Yep. Bidders am carefully studying the bidding documents following addenda receipt of all which is hereby acknowledged.
One, two, three, and four.
One, two, three, and four. Okay. Simon has a, the total bid for all unit prices, $6,276,000.
Is there a timeframe?
Asking Miller &amp; Associates. Two years.
Okay, so, all right, thank you. Excuse me.
Two years for completion?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a representative from Simon?
Right here.
Is that, did I state that correctly?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Second bid is from K2 Construction, Lincoln, Nebraska. We have the same addenda receipt of all, all of which is hereby acknowledged, numbers one, two, three, and four. Seven, zero, nine, seven, zero, three, nine, point, four, four. Have the same addenda receipt, all of which is hereby acknowledged, numbers one, two, And we have a bid price here of $6,847,307.31. Six, eight, four, seven, three, zero, seven, point, three, one. That is from Midwest Infrastructure, Inc. We have a fourth bid from KEA Constructors, Milford, Nebraska. Again, addenda receipt, all of which is hereby acknowledged, numbers one, two, three, and This bid amount is $5,240,480.49. Five, two, four, zero, four, eight, zero, point, four, nine. That is for KEA Constructors LLC, Milford, Nebraska.
So, the bids?
We have four bids?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a recommendation with, that we acknowledge the receipt of the bids, that we ask the road superintendent along with our engineer and legal counsel to review those bids, particularly keeping in mind the low two bids, to make sure that we have an apples-to-apples bid before we make any kind of commitment to this work.
Okay.
Does that happen to be an engineer's estimate on this project?
There is. May I read that?
There is an engineer's estimate on this project?
Yes.
Would you state that for us, please?
Engineer's estimate of probable cost for this project was $6,653,915.
Thank you.
Six, six, five, three, nine, one, five.
And then also in the process, given consideration of the state funding that is involved here, so there is a review that needs to be completed by the state as well, correct?
Correct.
Kevin, can you expand on that, or did I state everything correctly?
You stated it correctly, yes.
Okay.
Do we have any idea how long that would take?
I wouldn't think more than a week or two. We'll certainly have some to expedite.
And that comes back to us in the form of a recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
I would be curious to see a report coming back from you gentlemen as to what our next step might be.
I would, on behalf of the board, I would like to thank all four of the bidders for considering this project and for putting in the work to supply us with the bids, and I would follow the recommendation of you gentlemen in regards to our next step.
Okay. Excellent.
So, you have the bids in front of you. Do you need copies of those, Becky?
I need the originals. They may have copies.
So, you want to hand me those? Oh, they have them, and decedents. Okay.
Okay. Good enough.
So, you will be back in touch with us when?
Soon as practically possible.
Could be a week or two.
Could be a week or two, yep.
Depending on the state.
Yep. Once I get an answer from the state as far as how long they think it'll take, I'll communicate that to you so that you're aware.
On the state, on what now, again?
Well, the state is funding a fair portion of this, and so they'll want to review the bids.
Of course they will, but, and again, I appreciate that, but I also appreciate the fact on having good bids, and the state will concur with that, obviously.
Obviously, sure.
So, you will communicate with Jason on that regard?
Yep. Let you know as soon as we hear anything on a timeframe.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to thank both of you for your work on this to date. I know that it's been all heavy lift, so pleased to get to this point.
We know there are a lot of folks that are interested in getting this completed, so...
Very much so.
You know, I am delighted that we have bids on this project. We've got four good bids, it looks to be like, and I think that takes us a little closer. Like you said, the fat girl hasn't sung yet, but I think she's warming up her vocal cords, I believe.
She did get up out of her chair just now. It's going to happen.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. So, consideration of a recommendation of the state of Nebraska will be delayed until we hear back from those gentlemen.
Yeah, they'll make a recommendation. They have to sign off, but the bottom line is, it's our project, so...
And they will look at if the amount is correct, but for the proper procedures and work to be done, correct?
That is, but we'll chew off a big chunk of that. I mean, we'll be working at it, and so they'll look at it. Our legal counsel will have us well represented, I know that.
Okay, super. Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda, are we ready to move on? Susan Moline, CPA, to present the 2023-2024 preliminary budget for Lincoln County. Susan, good morning.
Good morning. Susan Moline from McChesney Martin-Saturn. Preliminary budget numbers, you probably all have copies of this.
Yes, we have some information in front of us.
Okay. To start off with, with the preliminary numbers that I received, the preliminary tax request for the year is $19,183,714, which is up about $2.5 million from the request from last year, and that increase is about 14.9%, which is listed at the bottom. Under the notice of special hearing to set the final request, at the bottom, those dates, the years are incorrect, should be '22 and '23. So, missed that one. Prelimarily, your budget authority has been exceeded by $137,000, so that was rectified by the end of the budget preparation process.
State that again, please.
The, you have a budget authority of a certain amount of money, and you've exceeded that with the current budget that we have right now. So essentially, what happens is you're going to need to bring the budget down.
Yeah, do some trimming.
Yeah, do some trimming by that amount.
And what was that amount again?
Okay, thank you.
The funds that are being levied are the general fund at $1,016,883, which is up from $14 million last year, so it's an increase of about $2.8 million in the budgeted amount for that fund, and I'll go into it a little bit more in a minute. And I'll go into it a little bit more in a minute. The jail bond fund, we budgeted 1.7 million this year as opposed to 2 million last year, so that budget has gone down 300,000. That's getting a good balance in it to make the payments. The road bond fund, the tax request is 600,000 as opposed to 650,000 last year. And this will be the last year that you'll levy that fund, because those bonds will be paid off in December of 2024, so there will be no need to budget for that fund next year. So that will be on its way out for the end of next year. The total budgeted expenditures went from 60 million, 713, to 61 million, 259,000, which is an increase of about 546,000. The, so, that is from the budgeted, last year to the budgeted this year, and that's all kind of summarized at the bottom. So those went up, only up 0.9%. The general fund budget increased by about 2.3 million, and that includes an increase in the budgeted transfer from general to roads of about 900,000. So we had to increase that. The road budget expenditures actually increased by three, the budgeted expenditures increased by about 3.6 million, but because of the fact that that includes certain projects that were not completed last year, those have to be rebudgeted this year. But because those didn't get spent last year, there's more money available to start with in the road fund. And that was about, it started out with additional funds of about 2.4 million. So that 3 million is covered by carryovers from last year in part, and then the rest of it will be made up by an additional transfer from the road, the general fund. In general, as far as the property tax request, and this is all summarized at the bottom under the special here, notice of special hearing for the final tax request, the actual property tax request went up 14.9% over last year's request. The valuation went from 5 billion, 315 million, to 5 billion, 772 million. So the actual valuation went up 8.6% this year. The tax rate preliminarily is, went from 31.4 cents to 33.2 cents, which is an increase of about 5.8%. Any questions so far? Lots of numbers.
Yeah. Explain to me the 0.298 figure that you had there on tax rate in prior tax request, was it current?
That is, if, if the tax request, let's see. If the tax request did not change, let's say there was no change in the tax request, that would be what your levy would be, based on the current year.
Evaluation.
Evaluation.
So that would be revenue neutral.
So that, and that is a required disclosure on the budget notices.
Okay. Thank you.
The rest of these pages, the pages 2 through 4, 2 through 4 actually goes through the restricted funds calculation. It just basically, on page 3, lists out all the taxes that are considered restricted funds. Those are the ones that are being restricted as to how much they can increase each year. And then there are certain exclusions from that lid authority. We can exclude certain capital improvements, and those are capital improvements that are actually paid for out of restricted funds, which is why we transfer money from the general fund to the roads fund. That's considered restricted funds, and we can exclude up to that amount of road projects from this calculation.
And those funds that are not on the restricted list are on page 4, is that correct?
On page 4, the, this is just the exclusions. So we have a list of all the restricted funds on page 3, and then the stuff that can be eliminated or removed from that as far as coming up with where you are with your lid. We can exclude those capital improvements, interlocal agreements, and any bond payments. So those can all be excluded, and that's just how the whole thing is calculated.
And those are the amounts on page 4, then?
Let's see. The exclusions are the amounts, they're just.
So there's like 7.7 million of excluded funds?
Yes. From the 21 million of restricted funds to start with. The rest of the, well, the page 5 of the budget gives you kind of a summary of the last several years of what the levy has been. For comparison purposes, it has gone up and down depending on, a lot of it has depended on bonds that have been issued. And that will have a tendency to increase or decrease. And it is split out between the levy for the general fund and the levy for the bond funds.
Yes, uh-huh, okay. Bond funds are steadily decreasing, that is due to the fact that they're being paid off, correct?
Yes. We usually have to budget quite a bit to begin with to get those first few payments paid, because you're budgeting now for money you're going to receive next May, next October, September. So, then it usually decreases after those bonds have been initially issued.
We had sent Susan some changes last week from departments that had contacted us about different changes they wanted to make. I think all the changes are in this, except for stuff we got from the building grounds department, which are not included in these figures, so those would be additions. Susan and I did talk also about a cash reserve fund, using probably part of our inheritance funds at this point. Really, at this point, we only have about one month's cash reserve for operating expenses, not even probably quite that.
And what's the recommended level for that?
What are they, would you say, a month or two?
Two months at least.
Yeah. I mean, three preferably would be what the accountant would tell you, probably the auditor, but.
Two months at least, yeah. You're right, we in the past have carried those kinds of reserves.
And the reserve for the general fund is 1.125 million, that's actually on the front page. The reserve for the roads fund is 250,000. So by increasing that, you would also have to increase your tax request to cover that, at least for the first year. And then we also have a cash reserve in the inheritance fund, which is also, the auditors have recommend, recommended keeping that cash reserve so that it all doesn't get suspended.
We don't know what's going to happen with that eventually.
So that can continue to be used for reducing your levy each year.
I think we can all imagine it's probably going away, so.
Someday, eventually.
So once that happens, you'll be able to use it until it.
So we're fairly early in the budget process?
Yeah, this is pretty much the initial budget process. This is the first, first presentation of everything that's come in from all of the departments.
Tell me again, the, you've mentioned 137,421 dollars as being unused budget authority?
It's, it's over your budget authority. So essentially, we come up with the total amount you're allowed to increase your budget authority, which is those three pages. And then we come up with what your actual budget is after all the exclusions. So you have exceeded that authority, which is basically 3.5% over your last year's authority. And so you've exceeded that by the 137,000, meaning that you need to decrease, you need to cut that amount at least.
Okay, thank you. Whatever other information you have for us, Susan?
I think that's all I have.
Benchmark, where we get a start?
That's, you give us the, as Commissioner Williams says, you've given us a benchmark, a place to start. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, Susan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, anything more you have to add on that, Becky?
No, we have a lot of professional here, so.
Okay. You'll, you'll have our ears in, won't you?
Yep.
And maybe more. Okay, our next agenda item is to discuss and consider an interlocal agreement with the city of North Platte for dispatch services. Dispatch services, anybody here, Jerome? These gentlemen?
You're up, Steve.
You're up, sir. Would you please state your name and sign in for us, please?
Steve Reeves.
Good morning, Steve. Good to have you with us. I imagine that you can give us some information in regards to this interlocal agreement?
I can. We have, we currently have 13 dispatchers. We have 12 dispatchers as supervisors that works in the 911 Center. And our call volumes have gone up, our departments have increased in size. So I vowed to go through a staffing study, because the supervisor's been complaining to me for a couple of years that they can't handle business with the number of staff that they have. So APOG is a national communications organization. They put out a template to go through a staffing study, and so we did that earlier this year. Staffing study said that we should always be manned with three people in the 911 Center. Well, we schedule three people every day in the 911 Center. But one of the eye-opening things to that was, about 345 days of every year, I have somebody out for 12 hours on some kind of authorized contractual leave. So, better than, or almost half the time, we're short a dispatcher. So, we're looking to add two dispatchers to bring the total from 12 to 14. Of course, Mel will still be our supervisor, so we had asked the county, and I think, talked to the sheriff, I think he had shared the document with you, but we, we were, you've always paid for the cost of two dispatchers. I'm asking if you pay for the cost of three, and we'll pay an additional cost for the one that we're adding. I guess I didn't explain that. We'll pay for one, you pay for one.
I see.
So adding two, split the cost.
Adding two, splitting the cost. What's the county's call volume in comparison to the city and the city of Gothenburg, and anybody else that utilizes your services? So, compared to North Platte?
It takes you all of the other entities you dispatch for. Which isn't just.
I don't have the interlocal for Gothenburg, but they go off of a share of the sheriff's department, so I had nothing to do with setting up these agreements in the, in the beginning, but it was just the county and the city of North Platte, and the agreement was that they would pay for the cost of two dispatchers, so that's the way that was always built out. Gothenburg's the only one, then, that I, I get the county's call volume for the year, just the sheriff's office, not any of the rural fire. And then Gothenburg pays whatever their call volume percentage is of that, which is usually about 15% of what Lincoln County runs.
And do we have, you have the fire dispatch doing those kinds of things, ambulance?
For Lincoln County, or?
Well, no, for, I'm just talking, you have a call volume of 100 calls. Seven are county sheriff, 14 are ambulance, three are fire, 11 are police, one or two is Gothenburg. I mean, there's a ton of people you dispatch for. I was just trying to get a comparison.
Well, a lot of times we talk about call volume, but I'm going to tell you, there's, there's a lot more to it.
No, I know there is, and I've read that, I understand, I know all of that, I know the machine, I know all of the reporting, I'm just asking right now for call volume, if you have that with you.
I don't have it with me. I'm going to say North Platte's roughly 33,000, and I think the county is in the 12,000 range last year.
Okay.
So I have the exact call volume, but that's, that's a pretty good ballpark figure.
So the 33 included all, all other calls, all rural fire arm?
No. Fire department, North Platte Fire and rural fire were excluded from those.
Okay, so.
So that's just North Platte Police in the 33,000 range, Lincoln County in the 12,000 range. So then the fires are in addition to those? Yes.
And you guys handle all that call volume also?
For all the fire department. Ballpark, what's the total call volume for the fire? You know, I don't, I'd hate to guess, but I can get it to you. I'd say your busiest is Hershey-Sutherland. Maxwell just doesn't have a good response to him, so after that, the next busiest fire department's probably Wallace. Gothenburg for us, but Wallace for you guys.
Yeah. So that ask is for two additional dispatchers, split the cost, county one, city one, whatever that cost be for that one dispatcher, total cost?
97,869. Yep. The city, for the, for those, including the two additional dispatchers, I have 1.327 million budgeted for the 911 Center. Your share, then in addition, you would pay the 293,604. So 1.327 would be the total cost of those. I'm asking you to reimburse us the 293,604.
293,604.
Yes. Tyler, have you looked at this?
I.
I was just wondering if it's a comparison, where we're at today?
As far as numbers being up.
Okay. Commissioner Hughley, I've got a question for you, I mean, you're kind of our de facto historian for the board. How did the agreement come about where we were paying for two salaries for dispatchers?
I have to be very careful what I say. Number one, there was not a lot of people involved, and it was a negotiation, and we tried, we tried to come up with some kind of a number. But a couple dispatchers. And there, we were starting new because we had our own dispatch service, okay? So we thought, well, if we, that's pretty much how it came up. Came up that the city was going to be dispatching anyway. They have X number of people to dispatch. What would be a fair number that we thought might add to our volume? Because at the time, with what we used for dispatchers, we didn't have a lot of dispatchers, you know? We just didn't with the county. We, as, as the chief mentioned, the. as, as the chief mentioned, the biggest part for the county was not having a person at the console because somebody can handle that. And our loads are, were somewhat different back at that time. But having sort of an extra person to cover vacation and all of those other times. So out of our, at that time, and it probably was pre Sheriff Kramer, was it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We, that's, that's how we kind of figured a float. So we figured a dispatcher and a float at the time. It wasn't a lot of years ago, but that's how it happened.
That study also showed our busiest twelve-hour period, because that's the shifts they work, are ten to ten. So those two dispatchers, I intend to work something a little less traditional than our six to six. So I'll probably be looking at something like ten to ten. So we're covering the peak times with them, with that personnel.
I'm gonna guess you're implying ten PM to ten AM?
Yes. No, ten AM to ten PM.
Ten PM.
Yeah, the call volume really picks up about eight in the morning, largely medical at that point, people getting up around.
I was reached out by Lincoln County attorney Rebecca Harling, and she asked me to convey on her behalf her passion and support for the request. She deals frequently with the dispatchers, and she felt like the work that dispatch does for the county is very vital and important, and that she felt like if we're just looking at the call numbers, that that is not a fair assessment of the demand that the county gets because the dispatchers, it's my understanding, by talking to Rebecca and by coming and visiting your dispatch center, that a county call, the dispatcher stay online with the caller until emergency services or the deputy has arrived on scene. So our calls, because there's so many more miles to cover, take up a great portion of time. And she wanted to make sure that somebody conveyed that information to the rest of the board. That she feels like, as the county has grown and gotten busier, that the ask for us to contribute a little more to the service was a reasonable request.
Yeah. Do we have an idea of what that difference in time is? I mean, an average call for responding to the city compared to an average call time for case out in the, in the county, dealing with our deputies?
I don't want to sound disparaging, but it kind of depends. A lot of it, a lot of the really long ones are medical. And it really kind of depends on the response time of your rural fire. Most of them have an agreement, you page, wait five minutes, you page, wait five minutes, and then you finally page North Platte. Well, you're fifteen minutes on the, on the call with that caller. If it's something that requires you to stay on, why, North Platte gets out there. Reality of it is, some are better staffed than others. Volunteer fire departments are struggling.
They're volunteer.
Yeah. And they're struggling, you know? They don't have people in their community. Gothamburg, for whatever reason, is very fortunate. They have a lot of people working there. Their response time's pretty good, but some of ours are, are a lot slower.
The other thing I think we might want to discuss, and, you know, Sheriff, you and I had, could we ask the sheriff to come up?
Please.
I'm gonna, so if I'm gonna ask him a direct question, I probably oughta, I'm gonna put you on the hot seat.
I knew he was just anxious to get up here anyway.
I was wondering, you know, you're gonna bite me.
Well, you knew it was coming.
So he's going to ask you who you are. I know who you are.
And you are?
Jerome Kramer, Lincoln County Sheriff.
Sheriff, my question was gonna be, we had discussed in the past, other services perhaps your office could be doing versus actual dispatch. Have we, has that been conveyed? What's that thought process? You know, maybe some of the, some of the other?
Well, we've had some conversation. We haven't nailed down a number of what it might, how it might affect us financially and their workload, mainly on maybe us having our own teletype and run our own. Because a lot of what we burden them with is is warrant-related stuff and inmate-related stuff. But I don't know if that would have enough effect on their manpower to justify the impact on our budget, because I just don't have those numbers.
To add to that, the state kind of, well, the state runs that whole network. So currently, we have three, three teletypes, and they're all owned by them. They maintain the connectivity. They have more of a web-based solution. I know it costs more money. But Buffalo County does that. So when they're doing VIN inspections, they can run their own. You got, you of course have to maintain the training for everybody that's touching that machine. Every two years, they have to be recertified, but so, you know, probably wouldn't want to always have everybody on the jail staff, for instance. You know, you might wanna have four or five people that are there. Kind of key people to do that. So there are some options. I don't know what it costs. I know Buffalo County uses it, and Sheriff Miller told me it's a little more expensive, but works well for them.
Okay.
Are we gonna have to get some of our folks certified anyway because of our new Flock system?
Uh, no.
No?
Okay.
I didn't hop out of a married together.
Yeah, Flock uses the, well, I think the discussion might have been.
Okay. Sheriff Kramer, the question that I have for you is that the other option would be for us to establish our own dispatch service, correct?
No.
Thank you.
Do you wanna think about that for a second? Okay, that answers, that answers my question.
Dispatching from what it is now, from what it was when Joe and I started, is, I mean, it's, it's a complicated, it's, you just can't do it. There's, there's dispatch centers around the state, around the whole country that are consolidating just for that reason. There's just too much involved to ever have our own again.
And if we had, if the county had their own, that'd be quite a duplication of equipment and such?
Yeah, if we could even get, if we could even equip ourselves would be a question. And where would we put it in? And you're right, it would be a duplication, because we would, we wouldn't have a demand on our dispatchers enough. There'd be a lot of idle time. And to back up thirty years, back when we had our own dispatchers twenty-four seven, they were also filled the position of a clerk. You know, they stayed, what our clerks do now, they did twenty-four seven as far as getting filing done and, and different things. And the, the duties have just really.
We've moved past that point.
We have moved past that.
Okay. Colleagues, any other questions for these two distinguished gentlemen?
I'm not, I'm not gonna argue the fact that I think that we need additional dispatch personnel in there. Because I've been on numerous ride-alongs, and there's been multiple times along the course of that ride-along where that annoying, busy tone has really gotten on my nerves. That busy tone happens when dispatch just has too many calls. And curious as to the busy tone, who, who gets that busy tone? Is that all, all personnel out there?
We apply it individually to the radio frequency. So it, most of the time, the rules aren't out. So usually, it's North Platte police, Lincoln County sheriff. We don't usually even apply it on the fire side of North Platte because they go when they get a call, you know, they're not out and about proactively starting things. It's just kind of a cue. If you, if you're thinking about stopping that car, maybe don't for a minute. It'd really help.
Okay. I mean, during those ride-alongs, it's, it's blatantly apparent that there's, there's a need for, for additional people. My heartburn is, is coming into the cost. I mean, it boils down to dollars and cents, right? This is nearly three hundred thousand dollars of additional cost on top of a budget that we, because I don't believe this was included in our preliminary budget, was it? I keep, exactly.
Well, let's drop it, yes.
Which, which we just got, and it's not nearly as rosy as what the cities is. So we've got a lot of work to trim our budget, and this gives me a little bit of heartburn in that entire process. So public safety is one of our chief responsibilities. I'm torn on this.
Chief, you, how many stations do you have right there now at dispatch?
Four.
Four. And you try to keep it manned with three, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And this, and this would do a better job of keeping it manned with three, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the demand for those services or the number of calls coming in, if one could have a crystal ball and look forward, it's probably not gonna decrease. It probably will increase.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's it, I'm not gonna waste everybody's time, but it would, it would be interesting sometime to just discuss how those priority calls come in, you know? For example, just running a VIN or something, but we'll just talk. It's the only questions I have.
I would suggest that go spend an hour in the dispatch.
Well, you don't know how many hours I've spent in the dispatch. Trust me.
That was a very interesting.
I think all of us have been in the dispatch. I mean, we've seen them at work, so.
I mean, for me personally, I had no idea all the other tasks that the dispatchers do while they're also taking calls. So for me, it was very eye-opening.
All I know is when Connie left, she said, if you're gonna have to hire two people to take care of me, and here we are. That's all I know.
She did say that.
She is right.
Okay, colleagues, any other, any other questions for?
I do have, who was involved in this request, negotiating that out? Is this, or is this just something that you're coming to the county asking for us to cover fifty percent of?
Well, I went to the city administrator first to see if he was willing to cover fifty percent. And so it started there. Then I approached the sheriff with it to see, to ask, you know, if you guys had a committee or, you know, how, how you did business, and then, you know, there was some asking and visitation, and so I ran it by the, the city for approval last week, knowing that they'd come over here either this week or next.
So we, we've had personnel work on this number, or is this just the initial request?
I don't know if you've had anybody work on it.
Chief, what's our, what's our baseline from last year? What did we pay you last year? Do you know that number?
Um, I didn't bring the old one with me, but I can tell you that it would be ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars less. So that's what this would, would, plus three and a half percent.
So that's the gist of my question. This is basically a ninety-eight thousand dollar additional ask.
Okay.
Plus three percent.
I was confused on my. Plus three and a half percent was just the wage increase. It was no increase in benefits, no insurance increases.
That did get cloudy, at least on my part, so thank you for clarifying.
Two hundred.
Two ninety-three, six oh four. You were already paying whatever, take away ninety-eight, seven, eight, sixty-nine. That's what you're paying.
And so that number should already be in our budget, if it's, if we pulled over what we spent last year, right?
Last year's will be in. Just under two hundred thousand.
That's what I was thinking.
One ninety-six per day.
So not, not an increase of almost three hundred thousand, an increase in ninety-six.
Which is what I, I said thank you for clarifying.
One ninety-five, seven, three, five.
Are there about?
I was thinking it was just over two.
Okay.
That's where I'm getting it.
Okay. Colleagues, any other questions? Here's, so this is a very vital service. Appears that Sheriff Kramer and even Deputy Sheriff Kramer have no appetite for establishing their own dispatch service.
Sheriff, do you think that this is equitable?
Well, there's, I mean, there's obviously a need there.
Right.
Nobody can argue that.
Nobody's arguing that.
How it gets financed is, you guys have the first dreams, not me.
Nice way to pass the.
You're correct.
Slid right off.
In other words, you don't have Plan B, or counterproposal. I think that's what he was leading to. You don't have a counterproposal of any kind.
Or.
Not that the chief hasn't done a thorough job, because he's always, he's always very thorough.
Yeah, and you, I, I don't know how this increase and how the total budget, I don't know how it breaks down per call and if it was even per call. Well, it's not really per call. It's hard to come up with a figure because of the other services that are never, ever occupied, really.
I can tell you, just in trying to make some kind of comparison to other counties, it's all over the board. Everybody does it different. You know, some are call volume. Buffalo County splits it fifty-fifty. It's, there's no consistent model out there as to how they, some of them are ran by the county, which is, I think, kind of whoever had the most equipment. When people started combining resources to try to save money. So it's really kind of all over the board.
And it's only the new ask that's fifty-fifty. Like, the city bears a bulk of the expense for the service.
There's been attempts made to take the volume off as far as in-car computers, and so the guys can run some of their own stuff. But, you know, we, we spent a lot of money there trying to take volume off, and this isn't the first attempt to try to reduce the burden on dispatch.
Nor is it the first attempt that we've had long, I shouldn't say long. We've certainly had conversations on previous heads of the department having a certain program they liked when we were only one of Tuesday. You know, so there's, this goes back. There's, it's, it's a deep subject on both sides, just way longer than we need to go into here.
I would welcome a motion to accept this inter-local agreement as presented by Stephen Reeves.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we accept the inter-local agreement with the city of North Platte for dispatch services.
For a total yearly ask of two hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and four dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So does that mean that there would be, I'm assuming that there would be an adjustment to my budget request?
That's not the total amount. Because there's maintenance and support fees in addition to the salary fees.
I was going to, since there's not a second, I don't know if I should bring the discussion up yet. I was gonna suggest that a committee that certainly has worked with the sheriff before, would be get myself, if he would be willing, would sit down with the parties involved and see if we could come back with a recommendation. That was going to be my recommendation.
I would be willing to do that.
I'd be in favor of that.
Would you be willing to withdraw your motion?
If I could relax for a second, maybe she won't have to.
It would be good to have further discussion on this regard, because we are talking a firm amount of money, and it might be good to have some clarification on a few items.
And make it a priority matter, so this thing doesn't drag out. We get it done in the next week or two, so people can move on with their lives.
That would be my ask, because I have to budget it, and I'll be honest with you, I'm not hiring.
Gotcha.
If this falls apart, I'll.
And equally on our side, there's a sense of urgency. So maybe this week even.
Yeah, this week I'm good. Whatever, we'll this week at work. Get together with parties to be. That would be my recommendations.
Not tomorrow. We have an FBI audit of all of these.
Of all the times, I could really do it tomorrow if that works.
Actually Wednesday's out for me. We'll figure it out.
With all that said, Mr. Chairman, I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen, for your input.
Thank you.
Okay. Seems like we're tabling a lot today.
Another day, what you can put off till tomorrow, actually, or something like that.
Don't put off till tomorrow, which you can put off the day after tomorrow, huh? Okay, our next budget, our next agenda item is to discuss and consider acceptance of bid for the multipurpose building for Region Fifty-One Emergency Management and other county offices. Brandon, would you come forward, please?
I've already opened one.
Oh, that's cool.
We, we opened them last week.
Okay, what we have here is, we had three bids for the building that, under question.
Okay, what we have here is, we had three bids for the building that, under question, and we had those in your hands, you met with Building and Grounds Committee.
Yes.
And the attorney, right?
Yes.
And I would ask you to tell us how those discussions went.
Pretty much, we couldn't see it being fiscally responsible to spend that much money on, on the building.
And as a reminder, these were in excess of $400,000, and we had budgeted $150,000.
$150,000.
I can see where you came up with that conclusion.
It was probably one of the easier conversations I've participated in.
Yes.
So, I, do I take it that you have decided to not accept any of those bids?
Through the committee, yes, we decided that it wasn't, wasn't responsible enough to, to accept any of them.
Okay.
Obviously, Chairman, with our budget challenges, we wouldn't, we weren't going to consider it anyway, seriously, it was just way off the chart for budgeted number, but after pretty extensive conversations, we just couldn't see a way to get even close to where we need to beat, so.
So, what do you do with these bids, do they, do they? So, as a thought process, you can go out to Menards, play on your little computer and get a thirty-by-twenty-five building, metal building materials, put a concrete floor in it, and get a price, it'll spit you out a floor plan, it'll tell you the price with the two doors, that insulation will give you a price. You might want to do that, see if that's even something that's feasible cost-wise for you to do, I mean, just a thought, and see if we can scab up a couple of guys that had a little labor-only deal, to get it up within a reasonable price of 150 or what you had. If, if the, if the materials are going to be out of line, I don't know what to tell you, I think right now, Brandon, if I'm not mistaken, that vehicle's sitting outside right over to, I'm going to call it the city building there, so, you know, it's sitting outside right now, so maybe if, if that was the main thing, if we can, if we can't get the door, maybe we have a three-sided or four-sided lean to, who knows, but if, if it's something that, and that was the driving, that was the main reason, I think, was it, the primary one?
Well, between that, the, um, the trailer, and then a bunch of our equipment that we need to have stored.
Well, I understand, but right now, it's being taken care of, that's all I'm saying.
Sit outside, yes.
So, it's been taken care of. So, if, if we don't do something next week, it's still taken care of next week, so, but that was the primary thing, I thought, when you came in, was, you know, to, to make sense to try to get rid of some monthly rental fees for the county, and maybe we could do something, you know, within that budget frame. Unfortunately, we didn't do it two years ago, but we did it a year ago, or whatever it came about, because things haven't gotten cheaper, but you, you might want to look at that to see if these numbers are even in a reality, it's something that takes 10 minutes to do.
Lovely segue into the next agenda item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, those bids have all been rejected, and we'll go back to square one.
No, we need to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to reject all bids for the multipurpose building for Region 51 Emergency Management and other county offices.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reject the bids. Any other discussion? Local, please.
Brandon.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Hubie.
Aye.
Lure.
Now, I know why that makes sense. I wonder. Thank you, committee, for your work on that, it was relatively easy choice, and I concur with you wholeheartedly, thank you. Okay, next agenda item is to discuss and consider making a special purchase pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 23, Day 3109, Day 3. Deputy County Attorney, we have something you would like to mention in this regard?
So, Brandon was meeting with the building committee, and I just happened to be walking by, wrong place, wrong time, and I got pulled into this meeting. And as they were discussing the bids that were just rejected, I did a little legal research, and there's a portion of the County Purchasing Act that allows the county board to waive the formal bidding requirements if you're going to make a special purchase, there are some additional hoops you have to jump through, notice of the purchase has to be published five days in advance, you have to allow for informal quotes from interested vendors, but it allows the board to more or less follow Joe's suggestion, you can kind of go cherry pick what you want. The basis for it is that there has to be a significant cost savings to the county, now that we've had the bids put out for the building once and gotten them back, had the bids put out for the building a second time, and they all came back more than double the budget, I think that probably satisfies the necessary requirement that the county will save significant money, because I don't think the special purchase will exceed the budget. So, that is the point of this agenda item, you can't actually buy anything today, this is just for the board to basically discuss and decide to do this, then before you actually make the purchase, we have to do some other things.
To that point, a number of months ago, I did that very thing, I did an informal inquiry to see if the, if I could come up with a number on a construction project that would fit the budget, and saw some positive possibilities, did not obviously request any kind of a formal thing, I just went out on my own and asked for some specs on a forty-by-sixty building, so, that's the challenge, and to that point, that original design, we did not receive any bids, and I think maybe part of that, I'm speculating, because I don't know, might have been because it wasn't, the scale wasn't great enough to warrant interest, I don't know, I don't know what this, it's an open-ended wonderment, I don't know why, but we did not receive any inquiries or applications or bids for that base construction criteria. Thus, thus, we, we called, I went down and, you wouldn't believe I could do this, but I drove him down the hall kicking and screaming to have a discussion about this, and our frustration was not being able to find that common ground, so to speak, and fit the budget, so, to Joe's point, that's, we bandied that about for a while, and that's how this evolved.
So, 23, Day 3109 gives us another avenue to explore this type of specialty. Okay.
And by the way, it didn't involve Menards, I didn't, I didn't make, I didn't, I didn't go to the kiosk and do the thing there.
So, Brandon, I have a question for you, the primary purpose for the, a storage building, what is it? Is it to get your mobile command unit out of the elements, or is it for other gear and items that are in storage units?
Both.
Both?
Yes.
How long is your, how long have you had a mobile command unit, whether it be the ambulance or this new one?
Four years now, probably.
And the entire four years it's been out?
The ambulance, the ambulance itself has been in a storage unit.
Okay.
The mobile command we just received in this year.
And it's too large to fit into the unit?
It's too large to fit in the storage unit, so it's been sitting out.
So, the ambulance, we no longer have?
The ambulance, we still have, we were trying to work a deal with Civil Air Patrol, but they're not going to be able to, to utilize it, so, that'll be coming up on, on another day.
And part of this evolution, I think everybody knows this, is we're trying to make it a multifaceted structure, so we could offset some other expenses and challenges for statutorily required, say, uh, storage and documents and so forth, and we reached to your, so to your point about what we're going, what are you going to do with this building, well, two, two things come to mind, first of all, we've kicked the $150,000 thing down the road in about three years, and it's going to kick us in the teeth with the budget lead, unfortunately, but the second element is, once we turned that corner and looked at multifaceted storage, it was, it was pretty obvious that we'd exceeded a responsible budget number, so, the informal conclusion drawn last week was, from a budgetary standpoint, we look, we need to look at the basic structure, we, we need to look at a construction design that would allow us to put that addition on one end or the side, or what have you, and work that into a different budget cycle, so that we're being responsible with expenditures, and so, that, that came, that came full circle, from the original request, which we received no bids, to the secondary request where we added the segregated storage units, so, there's no doubt that obviously added significant price, so, cost.
I'm just curious if it makes sense if we explore a smaller building, possibly from Menards or what have you, to get the mobile command unit out of the elements, and then possibly some Conex boxes, or something along those lines, significantly cheaper than we already have, and, I mean, we're utilizing some now for storage, that might be a route to go.
All good, all good points, and we've also discussed that, Brandon's been involved in that, the bottom line is, you know, you, that's your top number, and you work backwards, and there's no, nothing says we're going to do this approach, that we can't look at three or four different options, obviously, we want, we want that number to be as frugal as possible.
Yeah, I think if, all of this process has shown us that we need to go back to square one, and the original request was for a building to store your equipment, and some basic storage, and it would have been nice if we could have done more, but that was going to cost way too much money, so we have to go back to square one. So, I would, I would welcome suggestions how we proceed from here.
Any other additional, additional comment, Tyler, for that, or?
Nope.
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 Succinctly, but, okay.
Okay, well, Brandon, it looks like you can explore some other options.
Okay.
And be sure and.
We'd be lending support to that.
Lending support from individuals that.
And to Chris's point about Conex boxes as well.
Yep.
Certainly, look at all facets, but ultimately, I think a lesson is, as much as possible to build it as a component-style project, so that we can outbuild.
Can add on.
Add on later, as our needs.
As budgetarily responsive, right?
Sounds good.
I think we're all on the same page there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next item, do we have need for a closed session? No, good, okay, next item on our agenda is here concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives, anything from the sheriffs or deputy sheriff, anything from road department, about the treasurer's office.
Chairman, is the room, have superintendent sticking around for a budget workshop?
Hey, nothing, no.
Wanting to?
Jason, could you stick around for just a little bit, talk some budget stuff?
Yeah, sure.
Good, thank you.
Gentlemen, would it be fair to say that this estimated increase cost to one dispatcher of the $97,000, such that would add to your $137,421 overreach that you already had?
That would be my understanding.
All right, that's, that's how I'm going to report it. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Todd.
Where's the sheriff involved? She was, she was his personal representative.
Right, it says that she overpaid.
Okay.
So, how does that happen, a person overpaid? So, like, her attorney figures that out?
It happens quite often, actually.
Really?
They just do an estimate, and they make the time they get to spend.
Yeah, because we all know that's a really lengthy process, so they just make educated.
Two, three times a year. Lots of to pay more.
Yeah, and so, it's not that uncommon, it's the first one I've seen.
Let's not do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not super obvious, but it does. One more. It's a little bit painful in here, it's, it's.
That's a shame, that's a shame.
But they're happy though.
What? Looks good. I assume you want to speak. We understand this, common folk will wait. Well, I would say go ahead with your budget discussion.
That's, that's a given.
Just get used to it. I always thought you knew that.
You must change, actually, you didn't end up with any of the first steps you were sure, I mean, I know. Didn't you add them into your line?
Oh, you can, yeah.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yeah, that's what, I see, I think it's a chancey, no, it's okay.
I said, maybe you can go.
Yeah, I know. So many things I could say right now.
I bet you I did. I don't know if he's on it yet.
Can we, can we, oh, you're kidding me?
I guess I'm... I guess I'm...
So...
I think the workforce is... So... I know, I'm sorry. I think it came in as bad as it might have been. That was my... I think the coffee pot in our office, I wonder why there's... So... I was filming. Yeah. No, I agree. And the... So I guess we'll probably kill it. How does that work? I didn't know how that worked. Alright, want some? Okay. I'm gonna observe you for a while.
Yeah, it's my best guess. I'm gonna be telling you some of the people coming and going.
Um, cause I don't know. Not too much of a...
It's always not for me. I mean, I'm questioning a lot of questions and...
I have zero, but that's gonna cost, cause we did it all over at that jail, the test fire, the maintenance. Is that hard?
No, I'll put it in the building.
No, it's fine. I just need, uh... I have electric plenty, let's see what it causes. This fuel because of the years, it's running down, because we got a whole ten years. And that's probably... I just didn't know how it...
Yeah, and I didn't have a chance.
I mean, I'm, this is a...
Okay. Cheryl, this one too. Okay, so...
And that's a... I didn't know a lot of us were fighting the Tyson. If we had one to compare our prices, we'd see the regular things.
Yeah, I know there's... There's... I think...
Yes.
I think so. I think so.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have zero, but that's gonna cost, cause we did it all over at that jail, the test fire, the maintenance. Is that hard?
No, I'll put it in the building.
No, it's fine. I just need, uh... I have electric plenty, let's see what it causes. This fuel because of the years, it's running down, because we got a whole ten years. And that's probably... I just didn't know how it...
Yeah, and I didn't have a chance.
I mean, I'm, this is a...
Okay. Cheryl, this one too. Okay, so...
And that's a... I didn't know a lot of us were fighting the Tyson. If we had one to compare our prices, we'd see the regular things.
Yeah, I know there's... I think it's so much money.
Yes, yes. Like Sarah, we're three pounds on it. Yeah, no, I'm not that kind of...
No, 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 I got it. No, I got it. I don't do those things like that.
Yeah.
I can say like that.
Yeah.
It's a...
Yeah. I just didn't know. Yeah. I just didn't know. Yeah.
Okay, um, our next item is Lincoln County budget work session and, uh, Becky, would you kind of, uh, take us from here?
Yep.
Uh, we did ask that road superintendent and deputy stick around for the, uh, this for a few moments, cause it, I anticipate there's some questions in regards to that budget. Colleagues.
Becky, you may start. Yeah, why don't you start, Becky? Is this all...
Yes.
This is, this is the new, Susan already told us about the...
High line.
Evaluation went up about three hundred billion, so that's copies from region B. Joe, that's... The people that contacted me prior to today, um, the emergency mandates have some increases in phone stuff for their budget, um, IT and county courts. Um, the state is putting in that T-one line or whatever for the AS400, also that also like tripled off.
Yeah.
So the bill we got was a lot more, so county court and IT put more money in their budget for those.
One of those unfunded mandates.
Yeah, so, um, other budget, this latest general actual, actual cost from region two, I believe it was, so I reduced that one, um, some of that budget. So the fees are your minimum pages for your... I put an A so you know, I don't know how you wanna keep it your budget folder, but I'm just gonna do, since A six, B, I'm just gonna keep on, so if you have...
That's worked in the past, so thank you.
So A is the first iteration of changes, okay? Thank you.
Um, just the name of Booker, like I said, he, the information was, there was no figures, so, um, he wasn't sure how to do that, so, um, what Booker just gave me for things he needed to change in his budget, we need to add another forty-three thousand, six forty-five.
How much?
Forty-three thousand, six forty-five.
Okay.
What was for a Bobcat?
That's a renewed request.
Yes, one was for a Bobcat, one was for some parking and then another coal mine person.
These are all mine?
For the probation.
What was the total again Becky?
Forty-three thousand, six forty-five.
No, they have, it's all the...
The other thing about Wolfbeak's budget that I think we probably need to keep track of, and I'll put this in the building fund, the...
Yeah, they are. I think these are all...
Okay, so I'm just gonna make a new line, I don't put that in the...
Becky, did you have...
I had some extra, Tammy, have some?
I had three in my hand, extras, I was like...
He was ordering, he was ordering.
Who missed that?
And how much was the figure for the general, the general ledger?
Booker and I decided five thousand, because it's had a question mark, but we thought that would cover, I guess there's two hundred gallons of fuel and...
That should easily cover it.
Yeah, it could be last night.
If it's gonna be under warranty, it better be.
I mean, we, we can reduce it, I, we were just ballparking, I had no idea. So, um, honestly, I, I knew you maybe were, but I was actually quite surprised by what, that we were that far over, I was anticipating you were gonna be further over.
Me too.
Me too.
So, honestly, it's less than that, but not...
Well, we're talking about, I think we're talking about how we are down to a hundred and four, thirty-seven thousand, four, some of what we're not over, we're also talking about taking fourteen, fifteen percent increase in revenue. And, uh, dealing with that. With that in mind, since we have two gentlemen that have work to do, if you have questions for the road department budget, I would suggest that we do that now so that these fellows can get back to their duties.
Do we have, which, which number is that Becky?
Nine is seven, or seven oh five, are you talking about roads?
Yes.
Seven oh five.
It is page number fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, thank you.
You guys have your, I think I gave you an index, didn't I?
Yeah, you did, yeah. I just have to find it.
You can find it.
Why would we wanna pay attention to an index?
Is that...
Is it in your...
Fifty-nine.
You wanna...
He's got memorize.
He's got memorize, he's better than me.
I know that there's a lot of moving parts with your budget for this year.
Yes.
Just wanted to hear from you.
Yeah. Night sixteen, six two.
Okay.
Talk about motor graders, Jason, if you have somewhere to start.
Uh, we had just put in for one, replacing one for this year.
Okay, so I'm gonna be devil's advocate, so you say just one.
Yep.
Did we have otherwise put in for two?
No, I think it's just a matter of trying to look at our needs overall as a department and figure out where we need to...
In the past, yes, we had.
Okay, anyway, so the devil's advocate part is, we sold ourselves, and I'm not being cynical, cause I think this sounds better, we sold ourselves on the idea that we're gonna get these road groomers to A, maximize our time for personnel who make those, and B, cut back on hours of utilization and wear and care on motor graders, which I totally agree, so I'm not being a smart aleck, but do we really need a motor grader this year in this budget cycle? I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, I think you can...
Cause it's a lot of money, so it's easy pickings.
It's pretty...
We're banging through.
Yeah, it's a pretty broad generalization, right?
I know. That's why it's, you know, throw it wrong.
But I guess to increase our existing fleet of what we had, we, we would like to recycle one of our existing ones right now as well. Um, you know, another thing that we don't have in our budget, I guess as long as it's, might be something that's pertinent considering our conversations for the budget is, you know, we do have a lot of surplus equipment that's gonna be coming up that we're gonna be putting in auction. Um, right now, we don't have, um, in our figures, we don't have any trades figured into any of these numbers.
On your motor graders and stuff?
On motor graders or even a tractor or that sort of thing, so we will have items coming up that are gonna be coming in to be declared surplus, um, so there will be some additional revenues generated out of that. What's that?
Fifty cents winter surplus.
Yeah, yeah, some, some of them actually are gonna be a decent dollar value, so...
Going to big iron or something like that?
Yeah.
Sure you can.
Yeah, so we do have a couple of, uh, at least one loader, possibly two loaders this year, depending on how the budget shakes out and, and what we decide to do.
The other item that's a large purchase is the loader of, uh, two hundred thousand. Uh, tell us, uh, your reasoning there.
Um, so that one there is just to upgrade one of our existing units. Um, right now, we, the Maxwell, um, we'd be looking to replace their small loader, the one that has the, the grapple bucket on it, it's a very old machine, um, we don't use it a lot because of that, it's pretty unreliable and we feel we need one, it would be in that area, but it would also be one that would be utilized throughout the county.
So, so when you say small, what are we talking about size wise? What kind of loader?
It's an old nine thirty.
Okay, that's my question. Good sized loader, I mean, a utilitarian sized loader.
Yep.
Not a nine fifty, but a nine thirty.
Yep, that's what we'd be looking to get is one, even possibly with a grapple bucket on it too, as well as...
With a grapple?
Uh, with a grapple bucket in addition to a regular bucket, yeah, just for the...
Brush and tree removal.
Brush and tree removal.
You get a lot of calls, I get a lot of calls about this, cutting down or otherwise trimming significantly trees in right of ways because of the size of the equipment now, become a big deal.
Yep.
And I understand, cause I got a neighbor who chews me out going down our road because his combine's gotta go hug the, piss, cause the trees in my pencil.
Yeah, and it's something we need to start, uh, probably getting more on our, higher up our priority list of doing and right now, we don't have the equipment that's gonna be able to handle those very efficiently.
Okay, going back to the motor grader, if, uh, if we delayed that one purchase, where does that put us in our overall fleet of graders? If we do not upgrade one this year? Just, but, but just a second.
Well, I think overall, um, and I guess maybe Brian can speak to it a little bit too, but I think overall our motor grader fleet is in pretty decent shape, um, so I guess if, if I had to choose, and I guess I haven't talked to Brian about it, we'll see what his thoughts are, but, uh, I think that would be the one that would be the most... I don't know how to say it, but, uh...
The most tenable for years.
Yes, yes. The, the loader we definitely need to do, um, but yeah, I think the motor grader, our fleet's in pretty good shape and like, as Ken alluded to also with the road grooms and plus the other tractor that we have in our, uh, budget as well, that'll, that should even decrease our hours of use, so this would be just more of a, an upgrade rather than a sheer necessity, I think, but...
Okay, so something I'd throw out for my colleagues to consider is if we eliminated the two fifty for a grader, uh, the loader is, sounds to me to be an essential addition. We have some ARPA funds left available. We could trim, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand out of this budget if we didn't do the grader and if we use some ARPA funds to buy that loader.
That would address the amount that Susan brought up, correct?
What have we used out of ARPA funds to buy equipment for your department thus far? About a scraper and...
Um... That was about it.
Yeah, so off the top of my head, I think it was two twenty-five for the scraper and then the one forty-two for the tractor.
Becky, how much do we have left? And I mean, I know, I know we still have claims coming in for probation.
Yes. End of July.
Joe, you probably don't have your worksheet from our committee on those earmarking of dollars for different topics, do you?
End of July, we had nine hundred and seventy-two thousand left.
Nine seventy-two, and I'm gonna guess we've got about another hundred and twenty to finish up on probation.
Does that sound right to you?
I would say it's a little ballpark, maybe a little more than that.
Fifty, will that catch it?
Yeah, that should catch it.
I thought we had about six hundred thousand that wasn't...
I was saying, did we have a figure we could go through after August one?
You and I are cracking on the same page.
Yeah, I was thinking it was about six hundred thousand.
Maybe, maybe a nickel short, five ninety-sixty.
Left, left in the ARPA funds that has not been committed.
So if we did something like this, then we'd have four hundred thousand left.
Yeah.
Just an idea.
What are your thoughts on that Brian?
You got Brian?
Uh, I guess our grader fleet, it is in pretty good shape, which kinda led me to, to talking to Jason about this one, replacing our dirt crew's all wheel drive machine, which is a twelve M with the larger horse, like one forty M or seven seventy-two, which is still important to me, so if we don't do it this year, we'll be back, still probably trying to do that, but...
As a priority next year.
And, and, and that machine you're talking about, if you upgraded, that would be used for your, uh, road rehabilitation or road reconstruction effort?
Yeah.
If we don't do that, are you still able to accomplish some of the, uh, things that we have in our one and six road plan?
Sure, I mean, it, it's a, it's an upgrade, it'd just be upgrading the one we're, we're using now to...
And that's a, that's a motor grader that was in the budget?
Yeah, that was...
That's what the intention was?
That was our intention for it, cause yeah, our fleet, you know, over the years we've got our fleet in pretty good shape and I think we're to a point where we can upgrade that one and I guess, yeah, cutting it now, like, we, we could do it, we're not without one.
Uh-huh.
We have a twelve M all wheel drive, it, it's an okay machine, you know?
Would you rather replace that one or the loader that we're talking about, I guess? What's your...
Yeah, I guess, uh, that's a tough one, probably, I think, we're on the right track doing the loader first.
Cause we're doing, we're doing a fair bit of dirt hauling.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, because and, and other material in your road construction efforts, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And, and the machine that's down in Maxwell is older, smaller, don't use it much because it is older, correct?
Well, and in, in particular, a lot of these controlled burns, the landowners are required to clear basically their borders along right of ways, what have you, and we had a, a landowner approach us, they were willing to do all the tree cutting and asked if we'd help carry them and allow us to pile them on their ground and, you bet, well, we were dead, we were broke down the majority of the time this project went on and that area has a lot of trees, that's something they're gonna...
Where's that at Brian, you say?
Oh, the Maxwell Brady area, south.
Well, any one of those canyons, there's, there's a...
Sure, the trees are getting bad everywhere.
Yeah, within two hundred yards of my house.
Yeah, and I think in my time here, I don't think I've ever seen the bucket on that loader, it's always had the tree grapple on it, so that was the plan to replace it with the loader, with the grapple bucket.
Why not keep, why not keep that, use a grapple and get another loader? It'd fit on a bigger loader.
You know, it's, uh... You know, it's, it would take some mods, and the-
Oh, okay.
In the 60s, you couldn't have the quick attach, I mean, it's knocking pins out and trying to-
Oh, forget it.
Realign planets, too.
Okay. So, those are, that was just one thought I had when I was looking at budget, and as you know, if we have to trim money, you start with the biggest items first, and it's not to discredit the need, but if we could delay that motor grader for one year and not sacrifice ourselves a great deal, that would help. And then if, if the board, if my colleagues were in agreement on some extra ARPA funds being used for that loader, we've gone a long ways with your budget.
And identifying the 200,000, we should buy your loader, we're still leaving a cushion in the ARPA account.
Yeah.
And to your point, so.
So, on the-
Does, I, quick question. Do I recall right, I mean, does that affect our authority, our budget authority?
No, the equipment doesn't.
Exactly. So, us stripping that 200,000 out, it's just going to-
Will, will help.
Will help?
It's not in the lid. It's not in the lid. It's not the same, the other way, yeah.
One of the exclusions. 50325 is special equipment. Last year, we budgeted 200,000, spent nothing. Usually, hadn't been anything line item. You're budgeting 28,000, so I'm guessing, do you have something in mind, or did you just want to just fill a budget slot, or do you have something?
What item? I'm sorry, Joe.
Oh, it's 50325 on page 61.
Special road equipment. There's 28,000 in it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That massage seats for Brian's vehicle, what is it?
No, actually, we did, we did budget in there this year for buying another disc, actually, another disc, because that's an item that gets swapped around quite frequently, and if we had another one, it would be able to allow us to do multiple projects at the same time, especially with the new tractors we've gotten as well, so.
And that disc, as I understand, is really important for incorporating-
Yes.
-material in on your road reconstruction.
Very important.
Instead of running the one we have up and down the road, all over the place, having a second.
Bottom line on your budget, and looking at, you know, like, if your personal services are very realistic, everything looked good to me going through, I didn't have a problem. I put a note, are we getting behind on our motor graders if we do that? That was our initial note before we saw the budget. When I look at the bottom line, it's nearly 12 million, where we've been running, you know, budgeting 6, 7, spending in that. 22, 23, we budgeted 8, which means we spend 7, we didn't. So, you know, we've been jumping up about a million a year, or 100,000, 200,000, 500,000. So, that, that 12 million should probably be closer to a 10 million when you look at the off-year we took.
Yeah, and actually, I wasn't fully prepared to discuss all that, but I have gone through all that whenever we did this budget, and really, the biggest increase is just that carryover asphalt project that we're getting ready to start, that 2.6 million.
Okay.
So, actually, if you take that 2.6 million out of that almost 12, then we're looking, I think, at around a 5% or 6% increase in total from what we were last year, so.
Okay.
We were right in line with kind of where we've been running there, so.
So, even though we have the cash balance, we still have to allocate that in the budget and appropriate those tax dollars, or how does that work?
You have to put it back in the budget.
But if you put 2.6, that puts you up to-
It was at the beginning, cash balance, basically, it's where it was.
That puts you up to $8 million, okay? 2.6 on 5.4 that you actually expensed last year, and we didn't spend the 2.6. So, we actually spent last year 5.4, and you put 2.6 on it, that's $8 million. If you look at, we budgeted 8.2, we would have spent about 8.2, that's what that's saying. You're not really-
Guess I'm not following you. So, we spent the 5.4.
We had budgeted 8.2. We spent 5.4.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we-
Yeah, so we carried over about, I think, 2.88.
Well, I thought it said 2, well, 2.6.
Well, that's the carryover from the S, yeah, I think we were under budget last year by 2.88, I believe.
Okay, so-
And then we carried over the 2.6. So, if we would have spent the 2.6 on that last fiscal year, we would have been, we'd have been about a couple hundred thousand, 100 budgeted.
Yeah, 8 million versus 8.2. Okay, so, and if we carry that same logic through, you know, budget, we always budget a little more. So, if we spend 8.2, that says, yeah, we budget 9, okay? About, we're budgeting 12. That's, that's where I'm getting confused.
Sorry to backtrack. John Deere, you sure that could come out of the ARPA funds? No other?
Uh, no.
We had a paddle scraper and a tractor.
We had a paddle scraper and a tractor that came out of our budget.
Yeah, the loader came out of our, our budget, yeah.
I'm just trying to calculate the ARPA funds for assisting you guys.
Does that big picture make any sense what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, Joe. Instead of apologize, I wouldn't, I wouldn't prepare.
Yeah, we should, we should have given you the warning.
We have to understand that we caught these gentlemen flat-footed. They've got all of this information in their office, because I've seen it.
Oh, okay.
Me, too.
So, Jason, I'm going to apologize for the entire board have kept you off guard.
Oh, no, no, that's perfectly all right.
Because you have this down. You're doing a great job.
So...
There's got to be something I'm missing, because it's such a big picture, you know?
I see your point.
So, if you look at big numbers, so you put the 2.6 on it.
We have the carryover asphalt number, plus our normal asphalt.
So, you add, so you add-
That's funny, we collect a lot of your things in the beginning, cash balance, that's why you're not-
Yeah, so it's-
Seeing it here, expenditure-
Oh, so it's not even-
Well, it is, you've got two, two line items for road projects.
But we also still have our normal asphalt budget.
There's that one.
Yes.
That makes sense.
And I think that's causes confusion.
Right here, so that's the 2.2, and then it carries over to the 2.6, so two, two of them. So, it's actually almost five.
Yeah, the carryovers are in the works.
Well, yeah, we all, yeah, we know that.
So, that would get you up to the 11.
The, yeah, so-
We plan to go a bit quicker.
I guess in general terms, Joe, to answer your question, I guess, the best way to maybe simply explain it is, the project that we had in last year's budget, I think that's what you were alluding to, we had the 1.6 in there. We were holding another 200,000 roughly in there that we were hoping to use for that asphalt project, so, actually, as far as our department goes, we were planning on about 1.8. The bids came in at 2.6. So, from last year, that, that gives us another, you know, 800,000 right there that we were underbid for last year's budget.
Answers my question.
Okay. So, by the time you figure that rolling over, and then our increases this year.
Answers my question.
Okay.
Now, the numbers add up.
Yeah.
Jason, you're doing a great job explaining that to us.
There was another 800,000 we couldn't find, there it was, in the, in the overbid.
Okay.
There's a couple double negatives on the lid, to clarify, the equipment is inside the lid restriction or not in the lid?
If we reduce the lid, we'll, we'll be to the good on the budget. We won't be, we won't be, we won't have the penalty, we don't need to the good.
So, if we take the motor grader out, and if we were to take the loader out of this and allocate it out of ARPA, that puts us even in better position when it comes to the board.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about the loss of focus.
Yeah.
You guys are too, real, it's just, you're too honest. Closest don't want us to say, now, I can't do that. Thank you for your-
I don't think that's really in your nature, so.
We didn't have time to discuss the, the capacity thing, so.
Can we touch on that quickly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, but thank you for being so honest about that.
We just need to take a short recess.
You're learning.
Yeah, take a brief recess.
The equipment is not in the exclusion.
Equipment is not in the-
See, there you go, that double negative.
Yeah, I know, it's hard to-
The exclusions-
But actually, but actually-
Cap, the equipment is not a part of the exclusion.
Same thing. But anyways, going to credit this dollar for dollars.
Last question, and if you don't have the figures, and I'm not going to, by any means, be frustrated at all. The bridge, we just got some bids. I'm anticipating those were over what we had initially budgeted.
6.8 was about what we had budgeted.
It was.
Well, that's what we, yeah, that's what we were figuring on, the latest engineer's estimate that we had received, so I'm pretty confident, I think we're, we're in good shape to get it done.
Because only one of them was over that.
Yeah.
Simon was slightly over.
6.2.
6.2 and 5.1, almost a million under.
No, I was very encouraged when we saw those numbers come in, so, yeah.
Yeah, very good competitive bids.
And-
May I tie it up, or?
Oh, no, no problem.
I apologize. It wasn't meant to be that way. A lot of us haven't had time to digest this either.
No problem. Well, the way the numbers all shook out, I figured we'd be on one corner.
I'm going to call and beat you up when these other guys aren't here to defend you. I'll hit you one-on-one.
Is that it?
Right now.
I, I, we didn't draw any blood, so I guess maybe we'll head up now.
Let me show you how tough I was on you. The only comment I had is, like I said, are we getting behind on motor graders, only getting one? So, I didn't have a lot to pick on, on your budget, other than trying to make the numbers work on the bar.
It seemed fairly painless to me, other than drilling in my mouth, didn't need any, no game right now. Guys, you're good.
Thank you, General.
Thank you. So, is it safe for me to assume that we should still need to look for other places to trim?
Of course.
Even though we've met that goal with one conversation?
Just kick on the road.
No.
Thank you, thank you. I will. I got you, Brian.
The only goal we met was to make a paper transaction look good, that we're okay paper-wise, that's all we did, really.
Really.
So... Yeah, I mean, on that, that note, I've kind of gone through the major marks on different pages.
As did I. Do we want to, as we talked about before, discuss it now? Do we want to ask those individuals to come in and meet with us? Do we want to have a preliminary conversation? Or do we want to start on page one and go through?
I'm going to say we start on page one, because the county board is sitting right here. Actual expense last year was 237,000. We're budgeting 297,000, so $60,000 raise.
Mr. Chairman, oh, please, would you have Tammy come in?
She's making copies.
Oh, because I don't want to, I wouldn't hurt to hear what I'm saying, I want to talk to somebody back.
She's at the conference. She's here.
Tammy, I wanted you in here, because I want you to hear it, I'm going to be the guy that says it, okay? I'm not going to say something if you're not here to defend yourself. So, having said that, I want you to get any closer to Michaela, give her two copies.
Oh, thank you. Might be some information that might help. The road one might be from a year or two ago, that kind of, it'd be a better way to explain that, is inside the spinning lid, outside the spinning lid, rather than in exclusion, non-exclusion, as an exclusion, I mean, it's-
Oh, this is very helpful, thank you.
Okay, Joe, you had a question?
Mr. Chairman, I have two items on this page that I think are out of line. Number one is under personal services. I think it is the, I'm looking at the past history on the salary and pay for the administrative salary, it looks to me to be way out of line this year, okay? The other thing is, when we go down to travel, in the past, it's been the position of the board that, in fact, I think it's, I know it is, a written policy in our policy statement of the board that no travel, no out-of-town travel by airfare is authorized unless authorized in by a vote of the board. That's actually part of our board policy. I think that we've spent entirely too much money on travel. We're budgeting $8,000. I'm, in a year when we need some dollars, I think that, that, those are the two items that I saw, starting on page one.
So, the first one's administrative salary, and the second one is?
Board travel.
Board travel.
Or travel, travel expenses commercial.
Where it says two board members?
Yes.
So, the only point, well, I'm supposed to handle them first and second?
Because I didn't know that we were having this travel, since we have it followed board policy. We would, any, any department, including the board, would always come to the board and say, I'd like to take a trip, this and this. This board would authorize it, or not authorize it, that's how, that is what our board policy says.
Okay, so I'm assuming these are the travel to the national NACO events?
I have no idea what they're to, Chris.
So, that's, that's where they are.
And the increased conventions, several.
We're just dealing, he's specifically talking about the commercial-
Okay, yep.
-travel for airfare. So, those trips, board, and then-
I don't remember voting one time to approve them, but that's just me, and I may not have been here.
Secondly, the Nebraska Association of County Officials, we need to put in the request for reimbursement, so the lion's share of that gets-
We haven't done that yet?
Don't, I don't know if that has been done or not, I need to follow up.
And if we were done, was that done, usually, if Nebraska NACO does it, they usually book that and pay for it, period. National NACO does it, they book that and pay for it. Nebraska NACO does it, they book it and pay for it. If we do it, we pay for it.
Guidance, guidance was given to me from Candace, that July, August timeframe, submit your reimbursement request for those trips. I scheduled the booking with the help of Tammy, and submit the receipts July, August timeframe.
Okay.
That's the guidance that was given to me.
Okay.
I would not have known that, so.
So, then, we need to get those submitted, okay? Because that'll change what that line item says there, if they're not traveled by this board, and we're not paying for it, we shouldn't see the, you know, we should have to increase that kind of money.
But the board still has to pay for it, and it's reimbursed back into general money.
Yeah, you still have to allocate your budget for the upfront cost.
Okay.
So, for mine, are one of these my trip that's coming up next week?
So, I, I overestimated on these, because I had a hard time knowing how many conferences everybody was going to attend, because the attendance has increased substantially, which is good. But I think we can fit that, one of those into that, but yours was a little different, because they did book, and there was no registration fee.
Right.
So, the only thing I had to book on yours was airfare.
Which was very reasonable.
Because the room and board had already been taken care of.
But I did have it put on the agenda, and we did discuss it and voted on it, so that, that was followed, I believe. But I do, I do agree with you that $8,000 is probably more than what's needed there.
Well, we voted on the other one, too, as I recall. We voted on both of them, but I didn't.
I can't recall.
I, yeah.
Probably did, apparently.
I think we did.
Okay.
Probably did.
But, yeah, I don't know, eight thousand's a lot of money for all three of those.
So.
Travel, so, what's travel allowance, let's see, is that our mileage?
The four thousand dollars, though, is actual, that's for one, just to attend those two conferences, two national NACO conferences. So, that's why I doubled that, in case there was two board members that were going to travel.
So, realistically, that could go back to four.
And in twenty twenty two, twenty three.
Do you think?
I think it can, because I don't.
In twenty twenty two, twenty three, the actual was two thousand, because that national convention was in.
Colorado.
Which Kent attended.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't have that in the budget, but it was the two thousand.
Didn't cost us two thousand dollars, though.
That's act, oh, budgeted, sorry.
No, that didn't cost two thousand.
I wouldn't think so.
No.
Cause you were, it would just be registration and a little mileage.
No, I didn't, but you got, you said. Mileage and the fee, the fees, registration fees.
Well, at any rate, I don't, I don't have any, I can't speak for anybody else, but I don't know of any two, two people traveling to the national conference year to year, I don't know. I think it's, it has a lot of value.
I think it's good to have someone that's been an eye opener.
The only reason.
Segue to looking at, you know, federal funds on a lot of things, beyond just the board.
No, I think it would be appropriate to chairman travel.
So, the, the travel was on there, because I sit on the national level Community Economic and Workforce Development Policy Steering Committee, which requires me to be at the legislative conference and the annual conference. That amount is reimbursed to the county, per my instruction from Candace. So, that, and I also sell RAC, the Rural Action Caucus, so, that's, that's where that came in.
Okay, so, and I think that's great. In the past, I think that's great if you're reimbursed. That's the reason we didn't get on too many steering committees or other things that weren't committees necessarily directly doing something, you know, in the past, because of reimbursement by the counties, because in the past, NACO didn't, used to reimburse counties for those and they were underhauled. So, that's how come I asked the question, if that's what it was. Being reimbursed, that, I lose a lot of my heartburn, if we're getting those funds back.
And I understand that you reimbursed for two thousand dollars?
I believe it's two thousand each trip.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's just what I heard.
And I don't know, you know, like with my trip, that's not something I, you know, the governor's office called me and encouraged me to participate, because Nebraska NACO had recommended me to National NACO, and they are reimbursing for all travel expenses, so I don't know, on a situation like that, how you would budget ahead of time. I mean, I have maybe thirty days notice.
Right, and that's why I did, I mean, it's over equated, but.
Right.
To anticipate it, anticipate it.
As long as these are being reimbursed, I have absolutely no problem. I have no problem sending one board member to the national conference or something, I would think it would be appropriate that whomever that chairman is, would go. I have no problem sending people, as long as we're reimbursed, as long as we don't get two or three people going on non-reimbursed items, that was my only question. So, I'm glad you guys clarified that, it makes a lot of difference, Chris, thank you.
All right, Joe?
Just was the administrative salary.
And that number is the COLA plus possibility of having to increase the hours.
With all, with all due respect, there was, what percentage was that increase?
Two hours.
And that was four?
Well, it varies, but it seems like there's just an increase of duties every once in a great while, it's either hit, hit or miss. I do pretty good, I think, regulating my hours, but the predator has been a little bit.
And probably will, and probably will be for a while, till we get, yeah.
And, cause it's more of a, I'll get texts at seven thirty in the morning, or six o'clock at night, or.
I think that's a fair ask.
And I try and clock in, but I don't always get that done to clock in, so.
Well, I'm.
I'm probably giving word to the county.
But that's forty percent increase, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I mean, your, your time in the office is pretty flexible, I don't know, everybody challenges when you leave at two or three o'clock, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, if you have anything to do. So, that's the other side of that. And if you don't wanna, if you wanna, if we can make it a directive, no texting goes forward, in fact, that conversation came up as far as communication, that we stick to county email only. That's probably a good point.
Probably is.
That's not good texting.
I'm guilty of texting it.
I do it, because I don't want to forget something.
After hours.
And it's easy to do, a quick heads up, it doesn't mean I expect a response at ten o'clock at night, when I'm drinking whiskey and remembering I didn't tell somebody something. But in the interest of transparency, that's why I've used text, is so that I don't forget bringing somebody into the room, so, but we can eliminate that, and just, especially to the, to the specific under control thing, you just tell them it's off limits. Email them, or phone calls during business hours.
Well, and, not to be in their defense, but, you know, if they're out and about and can't get hold of one of you two, for some reason, I'm okay with receiving that text, especially if it just needs an immediate response, but if it is something, has a random plot at six thirty at night, or whatever, you know, I'll be honest, it gets frustrating, but if it's something that can wait, but if it's something that cannot wait, I have no problem with it.
Well, and we'll, and we can.
But my point was, in that meeting, to be emailed, because I want it to be held accountable, so if there's something that needs a decision, I want that emailed and wrapped.
I just, I don't disagree at all, I agree, needs to be on the paper trail, absolutely.
And with my position, I've always tried to keep it pretty flexible, that I don't.
COLA puts it at fifty four three, to Joe's point. Thousand eighty times two.
And the only thing in, in being, you know, I'm gonna, I have to go back out here a little bit. I look back in, at our twenty one, twenty two, actual expenses were forty three, and they're almost fifty one in the following year. So, you know, that's, that was over seven thousand dollar increase that one year, okay, one year. Now, with all due respect, Tammy's been here a long time, she has knowledge that you're just not gonna get from somebody coming in. She's invaluable to this board.
Absolutely.
She does her job better than anybody I know, I just wanna, I, I wanna be honest, because I'm not gonna nitpick as we go through here, I'm gonna be an equal opportunity son of a gun to every department, okay? And I'm just saying, when you look at a twenty one to twenty two, forty three thousand dollar budget, up to a fif, I'm not talking budget, actual, to an actual of fifty thousand, and then we budget that kind of money, to me, it's, it's excessive, and I'll get off my life over it.
And that happened, Joe, because somebody in the county was given a five dollar increase, which brought that up to about a dollar under what I was making. So, I did advocate for myself, and requested that same increase.
They, they were given what?
A five dollar increase.
Who?
At a third department.
Who was?
I'm not, I guess I'm not very, who that is, nothing.
It was the office manager at the third department at the time.
This happened a while ago.
Oh.
So, that's why that was a considerable amount there. It brought it up to a dollar under myself, and then she made more than a billion.
So, is the office manager at the West Department, is it the same person?
No, but, but it was when Jen was still out there.
So, did the salary go back down then?
I don't know what.
Well, I hope it did, if we gave that big increase.
Well, so she's left the department, and we hired.
I understand, no, I understand that. My question was, if that kind of a big raise was given, or was a big raise to Jen, because of all she did, and we hired the new gal, surely we didn't hire her up here.
I don't know, we don't get down in the weeds with what they're paying their employees, that's, that's Jason's decision.
Well, but he worked for us.
Yes.
We would have, we would have that amount.
Yeah, we would have that amount.
You know, an elected official, even though it might give us all heartburn, I think we've got some of that going on. There's a COLA, plus they want to put a merit raise on top of it. Struggle with that, but I don't know how much, we have limited, I think, salary to say no to, to elected officials' budget.
Electoral officials' budget, not appointed.
Well, no.
But, but to the point of this, this is, this guy works rough.
Correct, but have you ever, have we ever, I mean, he, he comes in and asks for the budget, and then it's up to him how he allocates that money to his employees.
That is not how it's been in the past, Michaela.
Really?
It really.
That's how it was explained to me.
How it's been in the past, is each office would come in, have a budget, we'd do, just like we are, Jesus, what are you doing, are you hiring a secretary? Why, what'd this cost? That's how it was done in the past, and it wasn't just a blade, they bring it, well, it was in their budget, it wasn't done that way.
Actual expense for the clerical out at the roads department in twenty two, twenty three was fifty one thousand, one hundred and thirty six dollars. The year before was thirty nine thousand, two hundred and.
Big difference.
Yeah, there is a big difference.
For twenty five percent, over twenty five percent. I see Tammy's point, I, it's until, I, I don't know these things unless I ask.
Last year, I don't remember. I don't, last year, doing the budget, and, and I don't recall any department, whether it was an elected official or an appointed official, coming in and having conversation with us, about.
Yeah, it started at twenty two fifty.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, the first year that I came in here, this board was here.
What the, the raise was?
I, I came back, I came back.
We don't know what Jen left out.
I don't either.
The first year you were on the board, I came back and I saw a budget or something, I heard, and I says, what is this about? You said, well, the budget committee did that, I didn't know we had a budget committee, cause I was new, it was a five member board, and so, I think it was yourself, Michaela, you've been in office for a month or two.
Yeah.
It was the budget committee.
I was the budget committee.
I mean, this is, come on, guys, and I'm not throwing you under the bus, that's tough, can you imagine somebody not having a background, saying, well, you make the budget, you're the budget authority, kid. So, you're right, we didn't, we didn't have that, so, it's a good thing we're having this conversation.
No, and I, and I don't remember anybody ever getting specific with me as a member of that budget committee.
Which I found out after the deal.
Down saying, yeah, so, I just don't know that Jason ever had conversation, or Brian ever had conversation with us about what they were paying their office manager, to my recall.
So, it's less than what Jen was making?
Yes.
Considerably less.
Considerably. And I think it's a responsible amount.
I, I do too. But I, I also want to say, I hear what Tammy's saying, that does cause a lot of attitude issues and environment, working environment issues, when, you know, long term employees.
Nothing new, if they're ever gonna change, because you've got elected officials involved in it.
Yeah.
And, they, they might have had a different.
But it's not just the elected officials.
Might have had a gentleman agreement at some point in time. All the department row officials are gonna stick with them as a parameter, but that doesn't happen, obviously, in recent years it hasn't happened, it's been all over the place. And I don't know within statute, whether we can do anything about.
We have the power of the purse.
To a, to a degree, yeah.
We can't cut them from being able to do their operations.
Don't have carte blanche on them. Especially, like I said, the row officials, the rest of it is us, thrown up.
So, in your years as a commissioner, have you had an appointed official come to you and discuss an individual's salary or wage? And you've had say in whether that was honored or not?
Control that we have over different departments.
I have not participated.
I, I have, I have one right now, that's, that's, when I get the floor, I'll finish.
Okay, you got the floor.
I have one right now, that's, I haven't mentioned, but came to my attention, that was the West Central Health District, too, is indirectly, we have control of, because we're one of the many counties. Whether this are true or not, I don't know, but it came from an employee within that group, that was very, very upset, that the individual that was the director of that department has not lived even up in Nebraska forever, lives in Florida, and draws a huge wage. I was told, I don't know if this is true, that her daughter, I believe, was running the department for, drawing another huge wage, who now, the last few months, has moved down to Florida. I don't know if that's true, but if we have people drawing those kind of wages, and not being up here running the department, I have a huge problem with that.
So, I've had heartburn over this situation, there's some truth to that, not complete truth, she does spend a fair large amount of her time down in Florida, but that was authorized by the Board of Health.
Not the Board of Health, you mean the, the, our board, the thirteen members of the committee, not the Board of Health, yeah.
Yeah, the, our West Central District Department, Board, Board of Health.
Right. 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 Which, why, why would that, why would that be?
She has.
Well, I can work my, my computer.
We're on an exit strategy right now.
What?
We're on an exit strategy right now, there's a succession plan for that position, and so, that's part of the consideration that was given. Uh, she's got an ailing, ailing health with her mother, who lives down there and refuses to move back. She does do all of the requirements necessary, I'm not defending her, I'm defending the board's decision.
Except when the individual says, when somebody comes in and wants to talk to her, somebody else says, well, can we help you, and say, no, we're, you know, that's, that's, I'm just giving a second.
I, I share your same frustration.
Okay, alright.
And there, our next, for a health meeting, there's gonna be those concerns raised, because I've heard from employees there too, and that was the contingent, if we started hearing from employees that things weren't happening, that we were going to have serious conversations over everything.
Thank you. But that was one of the reasons.
Yeah.
And I haven't said anything, this was two or three months ago, that, eh, maybe sometime.
I raised my concerns, hesitation with everything, to start with.
I'm back.
Okay, what's next?
I'm just.
Mark here.
No, I, I, I've, I've raised a lot of stink about that, during the COVID thing, what I thought I knew. I reached out to a commissioner from another county, and basically told him, I just didn't think that governing board was doing their job, in any way, shape, or form. But, anyway, I don't, I don't like.
Are you on that board?
I am.
Ouch.
And he wasn't on that board.
I wasn't at the time.
He was not on that board, when Bill was, and I'm not throwing rocks at Bill.
Yeah.
He's, he's too kind hearted for some jobs, bless his heart, I love him to death, but, there was, I mean, some things needed to be said there, and they, they. Tail was wagging a dog, that kid for a long, long time. Tail was wagging a dog before I walked in the door, if you might wanna know. And before this five member board here, the tail was wagging a dog over there, so, nothing new, it just need to be fixed, the usual.
Becky, if we move to page forty one and forty two, on page forty two, this is the predatory, predatory animal control.
Yes.
New vehicles can be dropped, can be cut in half, that can be, that can go from sixty thousand down to thirty, and we still got some cushion. Trapping equipment, we cut that in half as well.
Yeah, you can draw lines through those and take them to half at a time.
Jerry, you're going too fast.
Thirty three out, makes it one twenty three two, right?
Okay, got it, so, the sixty to thirty.
Five zero, three zero four.
And the equipment.
Five dash zero, three zero four.
Three thousand, on equipment?
Take it to thirty, five point, you're right up behind the five point oh four, one hundred.
New vehicles go down to thirty thousand.
Got it.
Trapping equipment, three thousand.
Got it.
When we had these first discussions, Tammy and I were working on, uh, making sure we had plenty.
Dartmouth, didn't know where to go.
And, uh, we've, we've, we've learned an awful lot. We've got a little bit of, we've got a few furrows plowed, so it's not a completely unplowed field.
It's not a lot of money, it's money, and we, so we can draw a line through those.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Can we go through the budget department by department? Because we all have our own individual notes, and just kind of address those notes, and if, we then determine if there's need to have that department head or elected official come in, then we can schedule that for future workshops.
Well, that's where we start with the county board. Are we done with county board, or do you have more points?
I'm.
I'm anxious to get on to county clerk.
Oh, kidding aside, is everybody done with county board?
Yep.
You're done. Okay, so go to county clerk.
I don't have anything for county clerk.
Okay, here we go.
Wait a minute. I have some green.
Uh, before we go any further, how much, are we gonna go through this entire deal today?
I don't think we need to go through the entire, we have workshops.
You're the boss, you're gonna stop. We're gonna stop at one P M.
You're the boss.
Perfect.
Okay, I had a question under line item, part-time help, one dash zero, four, zero, nine. Look back under, um, we had budgeted twenty-four last year, spent twenty-three. The year before, we budgeted twenty-four, spent eighteen. So when we spent twenty-three last year, we're budgeting thirty-nine this year. Twelve dollar minimum poll workers, temporary help, et cetera, and I put, surely they didn't almost double, but maybe it did, so go ahead.
We're going from nine dollars an hour for wage to twelve dollars an hour for poll worker wages, which is your biggest part of your election costs.
Okay.
You're talking a hundred and twenty people times, you know, eighteen, probably eighteen, twenty hours. Um, the temporary election help, this is a game changer this year with the ID stuff. Where it's gonna take a lot more time and probably, obviously, more people. I don't, I don't know. I, I budgeted for some temporary election help. So, this is our side. I've talked to Hall, I've talked to Buffalo. They actually have a couple of retired people that come in and basically help them process their early voting ballots, and now we're gonna have this component where we're gonna have people constantly coming in going, you know, they didn't put their ID in, they didn't have this, they didn't have that. Seven days after the election, they can still be bringing their IDs in. So, I mean, this was just, like I said, I know poll worker wages are going up, the temporary election help was a guess.
So, so the only question that I had when, when we look at that, I, I, I said, okay, let's add a third, so I went and added a third to the twenty-three, brings us to, but I, I rounded up twenty-four, said that's eight, so I said, okay, there's thirty-one thousand. So I said, where is the other eight? And that was just my question. I'm nitpicking, but I, I just, I tried to do this all the way through.
For the temporary help, me?
Yeah. No, not even temporary help. I'm wondering why the twenty-three to the thirty-nine. Nothing to do with temporary, I don't think.
Well, she's got temporary, yeah, here in, right, this is right here.
Okay, Becky, you already answered it, and never mind, Becky, you don't even have to look any further.
I, I'm guessing two people, two to four people.
Answered my question.
Six to eight weeks.
Yeah.
Answered my question.
I, I think it's defensible, because you don't know.
And actually, I'm gonna have to pay probably, to get somebody to come in and do that, temporary, probably, like, that's now.
Okay.
Probably.
If we need to take it out, we'll go back to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the only question I had.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have lots of different, we're gonna have to order all new envelopes, all new.
Okay, so let's get to a really good one.
Okay.
County treasurer's next, right?
All right, is everybody done with county clerk?
Maybe Michaela's not.
No, no, I, I am looking. I do all my figuring ahead of time.
I try to put stuff out to the signs so you guys know, and nobody's as good about that, but.
So next in line is treasurer, right?
Yes.
So the second line item, one, two, three, four, line item.
Yep.
Evaluation raise increase in full staff, sixty thousand dollars on top of COLA, question mark?
There was no question mark on mine. Mine says something different.
Mine, yeah.
Go ahead and say what it says.
I put a green star by mine, which says it all. That, that was an attention getter.
So.
So there's two things there. There's evaluation raises, but then there's also evidently extra staff members, and I don't know which is, how much is, what is it?
Oh, that's not the way I read that, so if that's the case, maybe, maybe it changes my perception.
There could be.
There could be.
Treasurer.
Treasurer?
Line four, line four.
Yeah, that's the one that gave me a little.
Zero, three, oh, five, and the way I read it is, there's an evaluation raise for the employees that are there, but then there's also going to full staff. I don't know whether that's one more hire or whether it's two more hires.
I don't know, but it's not a hundred thousand dollars more than it was a year and a half ago.
Right.
Which is forty percent of their budget.
Well.
If you look, if you look at oh, one, two, or twenty-one to twenty-two, then look at twenty-two, really, really ramped up, and then you look at this, you're ramping up more, and then when I go down to Kent's point, to the bottom line, and go back historically and look at where she was in.
Yeah.
Twenty-twenty-one, she was four hundred and eighteen thousand, up to a five oh two. That's a heck of an increase, guys, okay? Heck of an increase, and then you look at budgeting six oh three versus a budgeted, I mean the.
A five oh two? Oh, actual five oh two, budgeted five, five, nine.
So I had Tyler, uh, because the question was raised, um, about our, our authority when it comes to the budget and other departments, including elected officials. Per Nebraska Revised Statute twenty-three dash nine, zero, eight, the county board shall consider the budget document as submitted to it by the budget-making authority of the county, and may, in its discretion, revise, alter, increase, or decrease the items contained in the budget, but not without first having a hearing with the office or department affected. Provided, however, that when it shall increase the total proposed expenditures of the budget, it shall also increase the total anticipated income, so the total means of financing the budget shall be equal in amount, the aggregate proposed expenditures, including the operating reserve. So budget authority is, rests solely with this board. We just have to have an opportunity to have the effective department head in here for conversation.
And that's where some clarification on how much that in, that sixty-one thousand dollar increase, where it would be allotted.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because depending on how you interpret that information there, it could totally change your perspective on, so I feel like having Alex come in and answer some questions and give us some detail would be great.
Now, do we wanna schedule that for like next Monday when we?
One, one thing you might wanna consider, Mr. Chairman, is let's go through the other elected offices and get a flavor of as to where they're at. If, if everybody's at five or eight percent, one of them's thirty or forty percent, might be a good one to have a talk with specifically, but it might help to get a flavor on what this board decides to do, just as a thought, however you wanna handle it, it's up to you.
Go ahead, I see you're on board.
Oh.
I see you're right on.
Wanna go to register deeds then?
Well, I, I have a real problem with register of deeds because they, they, um, they raised their budget eight thousand dollars. And I have no red marks on that page, sorry.
I did not either.
Oh, I take it back. I don't have a problem with register of deeds. Try me, Mr. Chairman.
She is so frugal.
County assessor.
I know she's listening, we need to hack it.
This is that one where there was an error in the Excel formula, so that went, that seventy thousand for a valid rate was not, was not added in, it is now.
Now, where's that at? Where's?
That's the very bottom line that I pointed out last Monday.
Yeah.
Six, eight, seven, eight, you're correct.
Yeah.
And so, on, I did have a comment on that, what it was, uh, thank you, Julie.
Yes.
Okay.
That amended?
Yes.
So what's that number?
Eight, seven, eight.
It's in your.
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand, yeah.
And so the next one, when it came to planning, remember, we don't do zero, uh, budget accounting, so if you look at budget to budget, that sort of corresponds a little bit to actual, all over, actual went up quite a little this year. She tried to get additional funds in for, and she's budgeted in the past for future planning events, um, project planning costs, doesn't get it, she doesn't spend it, I don't know, I'm just, I'm sort of numb there as to even a comment, good or bad.
She has a, a few more, uh, planning commission members that are much more engaged in going to the different conferences, and so there's additional, they've been paying for their hotel rooms, and
Absolutely.
she's wanting to allocate that into her budget, um, because it's a good thing for the county to have people getting spun up, and then the comp plan is the big one. But there's grant money that was received to help offset that as well, so.
And so how does that work into these, if there's grant monies, Becky, how does that affect, guess?
June, I did talk about this. I can't remember if the city just applied for the grant and then they're going to reimburse us at the end. Let me, let me.
That would make more sense to me.
Yeah, because I, I think.
Because she's a city planner that we, uh, contract for her services.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I'll double check with her.
Oh, no.
But we probably won't get it till we're, but if a reimbursement at the very end.
Yeah, there's, I don't think they have that reimbursement ratio figured out. FYI. I think there's some that would like to see that all go toward the city share.
To do.
There's some that would like to see that grant go toward the city share completely.
Oh, yes, I'm sure.
Yeah, probably a couple blocks that direction.
That makes sense. Okay, so moving on past planning to.
I T.
I T.
Uh, we don't need them, guys. Cut them out.
Some of us, some of us use them more than others.
That was suspicious. They're very important.
The next one, Becky's gonna answer a couple of questions for us on advertising, insurance bonds, et cetera. Well, I just, um, you know, we are actually, twenty-one, twenty-two was two, three, and then with three, one has to do a big part with the bonds. Look at personal services, um.
This one, we're gonna have to do some tweaking since we finally did the stuff for travelers.
Exactly, this whole budget line item should go down pretty significantly.
Okay, and which, which items would that be?
Well, it'd be your, uh, workers' comp and your, uh.
Insurance premium.
All, all those items.
Okay, per EMC quote, I see.
Because we just, yeah, we just moved over to travelers. It should save us about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I don't even know if you had those numbers, she had a recovery.
That's a big deal.
We wouldn't accept it that, but these were in before, and I didn't change them.
Oh, sounds good.
So that number will change.
Anyway, that was my call, or one sixteen?
Approximately, yeah. We just had that before us a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And when does that, when do we start on that? Is, is that retroactive to the first of the fiscal year?
August one.
August one, we're in and out.
That's why we had to get that that day.
It was, it was that same day, was the, yeah, that was the last day to get the application submitted.
Yeah, that was, yeah, July thirty-one.
So the budgeted number's gonna change considerably there.
I made sure I put that per EMC, because we, at that time, that's what I had.
Okay, thank you.
That helps.
It was a four percent increase for the insurance, which we knew. Masa went up because we added the share of union employees.
For the Masa, yeah.
The, I think the rates would be a little higher for what we do, have print published, you know, still probably, it's still, I still reduced it, but.
Yeah, I'll be interested to see this addendum.
Federal payroll. That's a pretty good increase.
You gotta remember you have a seven percent cost of living.
Yeah, so that's a total nine percent increase.
You have people come, you have people add new employees, you have, this is honestly just my best guess.
Yeah.
This retirement, sometimes we're short.
Which one are we on?
Federal.
Federal payroll.
Eleven?
Oh, I missed that one.
Do you have the clerk of the district court, or where are we at?
Clerk of the district court.
Um, I have a question on this one. So she's increasing her postal service budget to five thousand. Um, and there's a note in here that they have to pick up the, uh, fees. Are they utilizing?
Is she using UPS?
USPS, yeah.
Because if.
It's USPS.
But that was the whole reason.
It says USPS, which I. This is a, this is a federal, this is a regulation. She has no choice. I mean, she's literally, she has, yes, and she has to literally, she is basically supposed to hand deliver this to the post lady when she comes in to get the mail. We are now leaving him in my vault overnight.
But then how, how is she paying for it then?
She's paying for him through the, through the chip.
Not through what I'm using with Penny Books.
I don't think she can.
No, I don't think so either.
It was, it was, if she had a federal audit, huh?
What is that on?
The passports.
The passports.
Oh, I see, thank you.
And she, she obviously does one, two, three a day. I was surprised with the volume, but. It must always have one, and I think they're like thirty bucks a pop. The chip.
I mean, really, that's her increase in her budget, so.
When you go over to the second page, we do have some input that we could have on furniture. I don't know what they're looking at. I I look, I look at what they bought last year, um, you know, I'm not so much concerned about office supplies and stationery as I am necessarily capital outlay for, you know, whether it be desks or.
I feel like every year we are buying furniture, that it just boggles my mind, across the board.
Well, if you ask Becky, there are a lot of years we didn't buy it because we had Battleship, Linoian, we had those old, what do you call those kind of desks, remember? I mean, they were, and they lasted for forty or fifty years, didn't they?
I bought one of those at the auction.
I'm, I mean, I only care about utility, so.
I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about furniture, let's go back to the county treasurer, because there's a substantial request
Oh, that's already.
in there too.
Well, isn't that the desk that they just had delivered and put together?
That was for DMV. This is for, the re, the new request is for, uh, the treasurer's office.
Exactly, which they have the new desks already bought and put together, and they're using.
Oh, they are there?
Yes.
Haven't been in there in a month, so it must have just happened in the last month.
Just a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
So, I mean, that ship has sailed.
So that's one that's already.
That ship has sailed. That's the dysfunction of this process.
Okay, well, kudos. Yeah, this process is dysfunctional for sure. Alright, so no sense in talking about that?
Well.
So I don't feel like the thirty thousand dollars request is.
You know, I think that, um, I don't know what she had in her line item last year for equipment. She may have had more than this year, so if she did, you know, it reverts back to the previous year's budget until this year's budget is approved, but that's when she also looked at replacing a bunch of other furniture. I don't know, I had twenty-six thousand or something, I don't remember. Her last year's line item may have been bigger than this year, but it came to. Her last year's line item may have been bigger than this year when it came to furniture. I haven't looked, but I would guess it would be.
She has had furniture, twenty twenty-one, a budget, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, a budget of thirty thousand. That dropped down to fifteen thousand. Last year it went up to twenty thousand. This year it's back down to fifteen thousand. As far as budget.
Which one?
On the treasurer's.
Page four. I went back to, because Joe was addressing.
So if it were, you know, the other way around or something, we could probably say, well, you know, you exceeded la, la, la. But, you know, we're late in our processes. Doesn't make me feel good, but I mean, what do you do?
Right.
I don't know that going forward, we need fifteen thousand dollar budgets.
Well, we shouldn't...
Is that new to the...
Regular households, our taxpayers don't have a budget for furniture like that.
Jerry, does Peggy, you give her a...
I'm lying. I don't think he probably has heard anything.
I refuse to answer that other guy's, it might incriminate myself.
Yes, dear. Yes, dear, that'd be fine.
Yes, I understand. I was gonna say, I'll bet you we budget about the same, Jerry, you and I.
Works, works just the opposite at my house, just so you know. But it's about tractor tires and stuff like that.
County court system's budget's the same.
They had a, did they, okay, hold on. Did they take a, they took a few decreases, but their data processing equipment went up. Did they get mandated to change stuff or something?
No, that's that T one line. Pay I C I O at the state for the pay of four hundred. That was that increased, that, that's what G increased, that one that I highlighted.
No.
Did we, we saw that on a different budget though, right?
IT too.
IT, okay.
So we gave it back to them because they weren't gonna have enough money in those five minutes.
Okay.
Oh, I was looking at a different line item. I was on IC.
Wow. So we over to the district court or where are we at?
County court system.
I mean, it didn't, their budget didn't change from last year.
Look at the addendum.
At all, right?
The county court system.
Right.
Your addendum.
Oh, fourteen egg.
Thank you. I forgot about my addendums since I have not inserted them yet.
I usually just put it right on top of the other one.
No, it's my bad. I just didn't look at it.
I started to put it behind. No, don't put it behind, put it on top.
Put it on top, right.
I learned that the hard way last year.
Good advice, Becky, thank you.
Well, I came up with that too.
Oh, and Jerry, Becky and Jerry.
One great.
Credit where credits due.
It's all Becky. I'm done.
So the other questions we can...
I'm playing catch-up. I'll be with you in a minute.
You got ten minutes.
Amen.
Billy? For instance, the furniture, county court, thousands of dollars every year that they're spending on furniture. I'm just curious, like, is this a perpetual thing in this courthouse?
When you're looking at district court.
Well, they didn't, and they...
I was, I was still on county.
Didn't they change an office space for one of the bailiffs too?
That's, that's what we're talking about. So that basically gets into six twenty-four when we look at district court.
District court. Yep, they have another ten thousand budgeted in this year.
And I might also tell you, I don't know what, what... I, I actually don't know the law here. I do know that those individuals are county employees. And the judge is always, whenever they wanted to do anything with the county employee in the past, whether it was a different raise, whether it was more or less, they would come down and make a request for that additional person. Because they are, it's, you know, judge is hired by the state of Nebraska and his help is furnished by us, so. I don't know. I just know that when you look at basically doubling your budget from an actual outlay of sixty-two to budgeting of one thirty-one, there's a lot of difference.
And that was, that was the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, right?
Well, I'm, you know...
So it's, and so again, they're requesting the same as twenty twenty through. Okay, I'm following. And that's adding the, a full-time bailiff.
County court system?
Yes.
No, the district court.
Oh, that's district court.
District court.
Okay.
Page fifteen.
Yeah. Well, we need another ten thousand coming up in twenty-three, twenty-four.
For furniture?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, I had that as a note too.
I think that should be one of the items, one of the lines that we have someone come in and talk to us about.
I would agree.
Okay.
And that's the reason I say when we went, we'll look at all of these because it looks like it's a recurring theme. And if we, if we need to cut dollars, we need, those are fair questions.
Yeah.
So both county and...
Yes. You're, you're ready and you're keeping a tab on this, or...
I was just earmarking.
Okay. Okay. We're counting on you.
Oh. We'll, we'll count on them.
So, so far we have the treasurer, the county court, and the district court with questions, right?
And I know that she's watching, maybe the assessor too.
Yeah. Oh, the assessor too?
Okay.
Okay. I'll let you, I'll let you take that up with her.
You're just...
I'm fairly confident that most departments watch the meeting.
Yes, they do.
How would they be watching?
Livestream.
They're working. They can't be watching livestream.
They put it on and listen as they work.
Really? Can you do that?
There are all of us.
Nothing wrong with that.
Pardon me?
It's multitasking, as long as they're getting their job done.
Oh, it's not right. You wanna go back to, let's go back to use of personal items during the workout. That's also in your personnel policy, Commissioner.
Dang, he's going back to the old days.
It's in there, I'm just saying. Yeah, I am. I'm pulling them out, Tammy.
You are.
And there was a reason it was put in there.
Joe, you just totally blew my mind. I can't even finish my list.
I mean, it really is.
I'm sure it is.
Oh, that's funny.
There's a reason that it used to be there.
So I think others don't speak until...
Tell me what personal services.
Seem to not hurt.
That's public defender.
For the public defender?
Page sixteen. Is this where our increase fee starts accumulating per hour?
Yes.
No.
No.
Okay, good.
Those are, I guess, general.
Sixteen, just the public defender's office.
Really see those costs going up, those actual costs in the last three years, haven't they?
Yeah, it's a pretty sizable...
Three ninety, four forty, and five ten.
I like the, I like the highlighted thing down at the bottom that says, please be aware that my law office hired a gal to work three days a week doing nothing but public defender work. I would also point out that this is the only office that's allowed to have an additional practice and source of income. So there's some flexibility that's afforded to the public defender.
I only saw the first part. Where is the second part at? Well, no, it just says, please be aware that our office is three days a week doing...
No, that, the second part was my two cents.
Oh, I was gonna say, I didn't see that.
I, I understand that he's had to hire in his own private practice an additional staff.
But he's got a private practice and he's allowed to have that, so. Oh. Okay, thank you for pointing that out. I'm not gonna say anything about...
Do we have any leeway in that particular department?
As far as we have every leeway, just like every other department.
Actual in twenty-two, twenty-three compared to request this year is very significant.
Very significant.
Sixty-five thousand addition. I am not seeing an additional salary thrown in. Seeing increases to...
This is actual...
Deputy salaries.
Deputy salary, number one, goes up about fourteen thousand.
And these, these additional deputies are allowed to practice privately too, aren't they? So maybe this would be a good one to bring in and ask some questions.
I, at least I'd like to know what these numbers mean, what they account for. Got ten thousand dollars for an investigator and only spent two hundred and two.
Because he knew he didn't have a chance, right? Well, it's been good money. I can't beat him.
I mean, realistically, he needs to have that budgeted in case there is a case that comes up that, you know, he needs to do, get some investigating done. I have more questions about the raises.
The salaries. Okay, so you're gonna earmark that one, are you, Chris?
Then put it on the list.
Okay, we are approaching one o'clock hour. We have reached to one o'clock hour. So remember seventeen, that's where we begin next time.
Did you say that to Kent?
Yeah.
He's gonna remind, he's gonna remind us.
I'm saying that to everybody. Because I'll probably forget. Okay, um... So if I mess it up, guess what?
I'll be listening.
I know you will. Okay, is there anything else to come before the board? Anything else we're gonna chat about before I adjourn? I don't know, what is supposed to be the best way to go, go about that? Get completely through the budget before we, our folks come in? Probably it makes sense.
But I mean, we already have something identified, you can at least get that on their schedule. That way it's not a last minute thing.
Yeah. What's that? Okay. Well, let's, let's, let's tackle it that way. Okay, so, anything else to come before the board?